Public appearances, are there any public appearances? Consent agenda. Oh, showing me, almost missed her chance. Consent agenda.
I would like to pull the contracts, um, for just in case somebody has a question.
Okay. Just the item six, agreement with the Crown School District.
Personal thing, I just don't think contracts should be on.
Okay.
And I wanted to pull the minutes for correction to the minutes.
Okay. And so I'd like a motion for approval of the consent agenda items two through five.
Remove.
Remove is the second. Somebody second it, please.
I'll second.
Remove is seconded, and all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item one, approval of the August 12th, 15 minutes. Carrie?
Okay, so I had two adjustments I wanted to request. The first one is, I thought a sentence could be removed under the section of the minutes that described the, um, the report from the long-range facilities planning committee. There was a sentence in the minutes that said, "The discussion of grade level configuration will be addressed at the administrative level prior to board discussion." And I just didn't think that that was a decision we made at the meeting. So I thought that should be removed from the minutes. I had another change as well, but do you want to have discussion of that one?
No, go ahead. Just both your changes.
And the other one was, um, there was a sentence in the minutes, it was suggested that the board discuss this further at a board workshop, that this referred back to something else, but I think what it should have said was, "It was suggested that the board discuss the long-range vision for the district further at a board workshop." So I sent those to Joyce, but I don't, those kind of, they, it's not true.
Are there any objections to those amendments?
Yeah, I, um, after I saw Carrie's email, I went back and I, why, I wasn't here for last week, but I did watch the whole thing over weekend. I went back and watched that session again after I saw the contract.
I already watched it too.
After I read Carrie's email, and I disagree with what, that that was what it said. I thought with regard to the grade level configuration, Dan stated very clearly that administrative people were starting to meet on that, and that they would bring it back to the board for full discussion. The paper that accompanied the document that was in Board Docs last week also spelled that out, that it would be discussed primarily internally and then brought back to the board for full discussion. So my point is, I know Carrie had originally expressed an interest in being on a grade configuration type committee, and that's fine, but when I looked back at what the board discussed on a board, on August 12th, that comment was not made in that board meeting. The minutes need to reflect what actually happened in the meeting, not what one might wish they said, or wish happened. And if you look at this document, which was in your Board Docs, it says, "A signed team of experts, internal, external, to explore recommended solutions, status was A315." You had, this was in the Board Docs at the 12th, and nobody asked about this, and no one raised that question about, "Are board members going to be on this committee before it comes to the board?" That didn't happen August 12th, so I don't think you can insert that in the minutes. I think you can ask tonight, when we get to this topic later on the agenda, ask again about that process, but I don't think you can change the minutes to reflect something that was not discussed at the board meeting. And can I finish with the second part, Joyce?
No, okay, sure.
The second point, um, there was clearly, there were clearly several different views about what the board workshop would be. The only consensus comment I heard was that there would be a board workshop on the subject of long-range planning, not necessarily, because Jeff made the final comment about, he wasn't sure he was on, up for a workshop on grand visions again, and you, Peter, cut him off and said, "We don't want to talk about that now, that'll be later." There were a couple other comments. Jennifer did make a point about a grand, you know, visioning and going back to grand ideas of what would be the sky and, you know, sky's the limit view for the district, but nobody else really expressed that. So to me, it wasn't clear what the workshop would be. It's interesting because the, um, the consultants we worked with did one of their options, one of the things they suggested to us was that we have a board workshop based on their recommendations, and we kind of didn't, we thought based on the total lack of not much feedback that we got both times it was discussed, we didn't need one. The consensus seemed to be at the last meeting that we do want one, and I think that's fine, but I don't think we should describe what it would be about here, other than to say, it would, as it says, "It was suggested the board discuss this further at board workshop." And you could say this process further, or this long-range planning process further, but that's all I heard coming out of the August 12th meeting. So I, I would not approve of either of those changes.
I would kind of note that the, um, the minute should sort of reflect not every comment that's made, but sort of the things.
That's the other point.
The, the things that we decide upon, or have consensus upon, or actually the things that we take formal action on. Uh, your comments?
Well, just that I heard Dean, I went back and watched the tape, because I thought, I didn't remember that way, and Dean did say in this meeting that the minutes are from, that there was interest in people serving on this group, not just administration.
He made that comment, but no one else followed up on it.
So I just felt that it wasn't a board decision at the meeting how to proceed. That was why, so I thought, I need to take the sentence out, because I didn't like it reflecting like this was how we decided to proceed.
Okay. After our discussion, do you still stand by your amendments?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess, I didn't quite know how to formally request those amendments.
No, you're doing that, just fine. You just move, you just move them. Why don't you move them one at a time?
So, um, the first one is, I'd like to make a motion to amend the wording, and for the sentence that reads in the minutes, "It was suggested that the board discuss this further at a board workshop." I'd like to amend that sentence to read, "It was suggested that the board discuss long-range vision for the district further at a board workshop."
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor of amending the minutes as, approving the motion to amend the minutes. Signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Joyce?
Yep, got it.
Second motion?
The other one was, um, I would move to remove the following sentence from the minutes, and the sentence reads, "The discussion of grade level configuration will be addressed at the administrative level prior to board discussion."
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Maybe just me.
All opposed? All right, now it's one to one.
Nobody else is voting.
You got elected, you know.
Well, everybody should be voting on that.
Well, well, no, nobody has.
May I, may I just ask a question?
It is perfectly okay to abstain.
But you have to have a, because everyone's.
It seems to me, rather than trying to fine tune the minutes on a one-to-one vote, that, uh...
Well, hang on a second. I, I can address it. I mean, if there's one person in favor, then the motion does not care.
Fair enough.
Okay. That's, if there's one vote in favor, the motion doesn't care. That, that's all.
All right.
Right.
I'll talk to you later.
So then, could I would make a motion to approve the minutes as amended? With the amendment that we did pass?
As we got this at work, we did, no, that's all right. We've, that's, that's okay, we'll proceed informally. We should have moved the whole thing first, but we didn't.
One amendment?
That's one, the first amendment.
Just the first amendment.
Just the first amendment. Anyway, the second amendment failed. The, so we have a motion to approve the minutes that have amended, as amended. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. A discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. We approved the minute that amended. Item six on the consent agenda, approval of a 660301 agreement on McFarland School District for MG21 student enrollment.
Oh, the reason I pulled that is, I think, when we're talking about contracts, particularly within board members, they may not be aware of the agreement and the setup of that, and I think it's difficult to put it in the consent agenda and say, approve it, and then later you find out, you know, we've got new landscaping in front of the high school. So I just pull the contracts, and if there's any discussion, fine, if there isn't, we know.
Any discussion?
Actually, you can't really discuss pulling it, and my account was going to be about it. That whole idea of contracts, which in the new and old policy which we approved, it does say that we would, we will put routine contracts in the, in the consent agenda, so you might want to revisit that, because we did approve that change. That's not our current policy, because we don't have a current policy on consent agendas, but that is a common thing to do when you have routine.
Yes.
Things like this, to put them in consent agenda. So that is, so that's a board discussion we would need to have. But I understand that's your feeling, so. So I would move, can we move all four of these together?
Yes.
Or do we have to, so we approve all four? So I would move to approve the tuition agreements for all four students coming to MG21 from the, from the McFarland School District.
Hang on a second. Do we have a second to the motion?
Yes, we did. We got an email about it today. If you look at your Board Docs, all four are listed. I'm sorry, I was gone all day. I was saying, if you look at your Board Docs right now, all four are listed, but you don't have to.
Do we have a second to the motion? Somebody second it, please.
What is the motion?
The motion is to approve the tuition agreements with McFarland School District for four students for MG21 enrollment.
I'll second it.
Motion is moved and seconded, discussion? Susan?
Um, I just want to validate that, again, for the benefit of the entire board, that we did in fact have an agreement in the MG21.
It's not in the charter.
It's not in the charter. So where is it that we said we would take four McFarland students? Where is that language?
I have no record of it. There's been, my understanding, the past.
They've done that since the beginning of the election.
So if I could just jump in as far as what I know about that, and then Jared's been dealing with it as well. Obviously, the MG21 initial charter was before I was here, before Jared was here, but there's been a longstanding agreement that, as opposed to using open enrollment, we work with the McFarland School District and their counselors and administrators, that they actually screen and will allow up to four students every year, where they will recommend placement versus going through our application process. And so, once we have those students, and there were two that were just added today, we're waiting for final names from McFarland, and that we do need a tuition agreement between the school districts for how we handle the tuition payments between the districts. But, so it is exclusively with, you know, the McFarland District. I did a backup, we've had agreements in the past with Madison as well, you know, where they have those seats. But they, that way, we do not use the open enrollment system. They actually place our students. So as far as the history, I don't have any documentation about how this was initially done, but it's been a standing practice.
Well, it's also, I, I know we had this discussion when, at one point, there was some talk about greatly expanding MG21, and they were hoping to do it for open enrollment, and we were very much opposed to that, because once we accept open enrollment students, they are our students. And we also were opposed to the numbers they were talking about, and we think, we just thought it would change the whole nature of the school. So there was a big discussion at that time, and the very clear preference stated, and Rebecca pretty much agreed with us, I think, that the 6603 agreements are far superior because they are still technically McFarland students, but they're coming here for their schooling. If for some reason it doesn't work out, it's easier for them to go back to McFarland also. And that, this is just how we've done it ever since, even at the time we had that discussion, this is how the students were here from the Crown School District. So there's a long history of it. It's not in the charter, because the charter simply is a charter that describes the school and the philosophy of the school and what will be in the school, and it doesn't, I don't know that it says anything about their ability to accept, except we could accept students on 6603 agreements as well, so, for other schools.
Right. Dean?
Susan has outlined it very well. Using the 6603 agreements has a much better control year to year on this, because the concern that we had was that if you have open enrollment and you recruit, you recruit students to come here through open enrollment, they end, and if they don't work out on the profile for the, for the charter, for the charter school, they end up being the responsibility of, of our high school.
Yes.
And so that's the reason that we, Susan outlined it pretty well.
And not only that, but we would have to accept any students who apply to open enrollment and, and random, you know, and choose from them randomly.
It's hard to control the number.
And we don't know in what order they come in either.
Exactly. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the four tuition agreements with McFarland School District? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Gee, correspondence and announcements?
I do have an announcement, two announcements. We'd like to recognize two special guests with us tonight for a meeting. I shouldn't call them guests, they're employees of the district, but appearing at their first board meeting in their new roles. And so with us tonight is Reed Foster, our elementary principal at Cottage Grove School, who you all know, and, and we are extremely excited to have him in his new role with us here tonight.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here. I thought it was late, but that was actually early.
It's always nice.
And then also with us tonight is Jeff Carr, our facilities supervisor and coordinator of safety. And he'll also be addressing a little bit later in the agenda with Jared on a report on our capital projects.
Welcome.
Ooh, I have, I have one too.
Susan?
Okay. I just heard about this today, and I thought it was really neat, and I was really kind of excited about it. And I don't know if it's happened at other schools, sometimes, you know, unless you're out at the farmer's market, anyway, you don't hear this, but there was a lunch at Cottage Grove School today, right?
Breakfast.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. So the retired teachers came to Cottage Grove School and provided breakfast for the current teachers. Kind of spontaneously.
Jim's, he actually contacted me in, like, in June about this idea, and I said, "Yeah, that could be great." And he thought he could have, you know, five, but it actually turned into ten people. And it was great, because it was, you know, it wasn't just bagels and coffee, but it was, you know, egg bakes and sausage and zucchini bread, and so it was great. I mean, it started in service on time, but we held them a little longer, just so you're later, but, yeah, it was great, it was awesome, we all said a few words, and it was a really neat thing.
And hey, Anne, just heads up, Grace Kylo wants to do it at Wonderful House, so you're gonna have to keep her going there. Again, they were all just really high about it and talking about it, and it was in a big community environment, it was really neat, they're fun to hear. Thanks.
Susan?
I have a couple. Dean and I both attended the A County Schoolwork Consortium meeting last night, and there were only a few people there, we're, I guess, kind of the diehards. A couple of people from, one from Middleton, a couple from Stoughton, one from DeForest, and a person from Oregon. We talked mostly about compensation plans, and they're in varying stages. Stoughton's is pretty much finished, and had some similarities with ours, so it was very interesting. I, um, we left it kind of vague whether we'd try to meet again, but the, I, I think the emails will go directly to all board members next time, so just watch for that. It's, it's a very loose group, and anybody should feel comfortable coming, and it's just, it's another nice networking opportunity. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that Jennifer and I both went to the WPN School Summit at Cromery Middle School last Thursday. That was also very interesting, that had about 200 people, from a lot of teachers, parents, board members, administrators, all kinds of people, who came, they had a lot of breakout sessions, it was very interesting. The idea was, again, looking at issues, and it was interesting, one of the sessions I went to was on, was there had been an international conference on education, and, and I don't know that it's necessarily comforting, but there are a lot of countries in the world that have it a lot worse than we do in terms of support for public schools, and even Britain now is struggling to pay for its public schools, so it seems to be kind of a worldwide issue. There were ones on writing, effective writing about bed pieces that I went to, that was an interesting one, and, you know, just, it was just another, again, nice time to network, and I don't know if we wanted to add anything to it. The other cool thing was to see Cromery Middle School, which is, which is, has some similar areas with Glacial Drumlin, it's bigger, it was built for 1,200 students, or 1,250, I forget, 1,200, they said last night. They have real similar design, the classroom sizes are about the same, which I think is kind of small, but they have the same thinking we did. Keep them small, you don't have big class sizes numbers, so they hope. But their common areas, they had walls that you could write on in the common areas, and they were furnished with the kind of modular furniture that our consultants talked about in the room, they showed us that video the first night of the long-range planning, facilities planning, about contemporary school furniture and how it's different. They had some modular furniture in there, the lockers were also in the common area, which was awesome planning. And there was glass, the glass they talked about from the classrooms, between the classroom and that area, so that if you sent students out to work, you can still see them and they can see you, and it was just, it was kind of all the stuff. The other thing they had, they had clearly two lunch lines at least coming into their cafeteria, but they had sinks outside, in the hallway, outside of the serving line, which I thought was really a cool idea. If you're trying to get kids to wash their hands, you don't have to go into the bathrooms to do it, they had probably four sinks with towel dispensers and stuff like that. So anyway, interesting design, so as we move forward and think about buildings, it's just, it's always a lot interesting to see what other people have done.
Carrie?
I mean, go ahead and give us, go ahead.
Really quick. I had the great pleasure of attending the welcome back session today at Cottage Grove School, and to attend the one at Glacial Drumlin School yesterday. And I just wanted to publicly thank the staff and the administrators for making those experiences fantastic for the families that came. It is so clear how much thoughtfulness goes into planning and moving hundreds of people in and out of those buildings, and having the kids be truly welcomed and excited for the new school year is no small feat, when there's just a lot of logistics to manage. I came out of both of those buildings, I could not have been more happy about the fact that my kids are going to be there. I just feel really pleased about that, and I wanted to make sure and publicly say something about that.
Good, thank you.
Well, we should probably add, Torrin Young, you can go in and you can vote. Player of the week, is that still up? Anyway, and the nice thing for me was, I had the opportunity to actually meet Torrin. When he was selling his booster tickets, he actually came to the door with your other students, his leadership, and kind of gift with other students was remarkable. He went through the neighborhood and met all of the kids in the neighborhood and shook their hands, and incidentally sold a bunch of booster tickets, but, but very impressive. And then the football team is also up for the same vote. And the other thing I would mention is, I actually was at the healthy classrooms, on the healthy classroom board, which is on UW Medical School Foundation, which gives out $1,000 grants to schools for healthy classrooms, gardens, making food from gardens, having recipes for gardens, all of which we do, and they give $1,000 grants. And we have yet to apply for those, so I'm encouraging you to do that. Also to go to the symposium in the spring, it's really fun, a lot of staff went this year, and it's great. So, and it's at the medical school, I'll tell you when that comes up, but just encouraging you.
Okay. Thank you. Item eight, administrative reports, starting with Dan's.
Okay, and to actually kind of co-present with me tonight, but I'm going to ask Deidra Gorman to come on up, and she is very instrumental in her work, as well as a number of others in a committee that actually put together this new administrative rule. I gotta be honest, I did write it myself. We actually did, WSB has come out with a guideline for us to use, but we made, you know, a number of local adjustments, and if you don't mind, Deidra, can you just talk to briefly about the process and who was involved in this one?
Yeah, we met about, we had a group, we put together that consisted of staff members from all of our schools, including school psychs, our GSA advisors, and administrators, and we also invited Brian Jukos from the GC to come and work with us. So we met three times, we, Brian had shared with us some reports, I brought one of them with me, school experiences of transgender and gender non-conforming students in Wisconsin. We looked at some of the risk factors associated with that, and some of the disparities between the sense of feeling community at school versus students who are not transgender and non-conforming. And then looked at a lot of guidance documents that he also shared with us, and that's how we came up with that administrative rule.
So again, as a rule, this is something that supports our policy on nondiscrimination, policy 411, which is actually up tonight for a second reading, we'll be talking about in a little bit, but yeah, with this, then, it's really important, we will make sure that this gets out to our principals, and they'll find the appropriate way as far as having, you know, notice with, with students and staff. And we think not only is it important that we have these guidelines, but these are very impressed with the work that was done, and these are very well done, and I think will work very well for us and, and all, you know, for our students.
I just want to comment, this is extremely well-written. It really is well-written. And often you'll see little gaps in the pieces, and up here, it's extremely well-written. Every time you get to a point where you say, "Okay, so what's going to happen when this happens," anticipating some of the things that have occurred in the school district, and there's a process for it right underneath there. So, thank you.
Well, I'll collaborate about that.
It's really nice. It's nice.
Thank you. And then item two is, I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Okay. Director of Business Services, Jared Rosen, with the capital projects update.
All right. Jeff, you want to come on, give us a few impressions?
I'll be right into the lines.
That's right. Just wanted to give everybody, as we're coming to the end of summer unfortunately, and school starts next Tuesday, just to give everybody an update of some of our capital budget projects that we have done over the summer, and the ones that are still upstanding, and how we're going to move forward potentially with those. But if you recall back, it was April, the board approved the 2015-16 capital budget, which I attached, I'm just going to walk through each of those, and if you have any questions, Jeff's here, because as soon as he started, this was sort of turned over to him, and so he's been following up with the cruise, but I told him that I would take tonight to talk to that, so he gets to see the process. Typically, what we do is try and give the board an update at the end of summer of where we're at, and especially as we hear for schools. So the first item here is the athletic field renovation, that is ongoing, so that's where we help reseed and maintain our athletic fields. So we are still in the process of, I'll get this out of screen here. So we are still in the process of continuing that, so like I said, that's ongoing. The tile replacement at the high school has been completed, so we are ready. Carpet replacement, which was, we classified as ongoing this year, we selected the on the morning, so if everybody would get back to school, you would saw there was some carpet in there, so that was completed. There was a few moments that we were a little nervous that we weren't going to be ready, but everything came through, and so we're very happy, and it was very nice in there. Thanks to the high school office for selecting the colors and making, you know, magic work out well. The gym floor resealing at the high school is something that we've put on the capital budget each year, just because of the use of our gym, and so that's been completed as well. And then our loading dock at the high school has been completed. We will, we're still in the process of getting quotes and finalizing the updates on the curtain strap replacement at the main gym, so if you've been in our main gym, there's the two gyms, and then there's your curtain, so we can divide it. It's something that needs to be replaced, and it's something that can be done during a holiday break, so we're going to put that on the agenda for that. The next number of projects that we have here, all have to deal with our pool. If you had recalled, the pool was closed down for the month of July, we did run into a few hiccups along the way, and so we had to delay the opening of our pool by one week, which obviously sort of created a nightmare for swim lessons and stuff like that. At the same time, we were bringing in a brand-new aquatic supervisor, so she's still working through it, she's still here, which is a positive note, but she definitely came in and took it and is running with it, so we're very happy with that. But we did get everything completed in the pool, so, and the pool looks amazing, it's just nice to see, especially when that environment is such a hard environment, and a lot of different things, and so being able to go in and replace those and have everything look fresh again. So, and I was talking to Jeff Schreiner the other day, when we did a walkthrough with it, and he had said that every time we have an event here, the other school would come in and think it's almost like a brand-new facility, just because of the upkeep that has happened up there, so, very happy with that. Moving on to Glacial Drumlin, the final phase of the playground fence has not been completed yet, that will be completed. The final phase is actually on the back end, so you can actually, if you go up through GDS, the first portion of it is completed, so this is something that's just going to complete the overall, complete the fencing in the playground area. Also, the 30 new hallway lockers that will be completed this weekend.
That was the only one on here that looked odd to me, those, it looked expensive. Is that the going rate for lockers, $500 a piece?
Not only are they expensive, but they're very timely, and they always come in late.
Yeah. Right?
And give everybody a heart attack, you stress it right up to that last moment, so.
But that's the going rate, is $500 a piece for those?
Yes. And then that also includes installation.
Okay.
So, so we are, right now, they were, they're telling us that they'll have them installed by the time school starts.
Clock is ticking.
That's for sure. When, well, the gym floor ceiling has been completed there. At Cottage Grove School, we will be looking at doing the painting of the gym ducts, so if you were at, if you happen to look up at the ceiling, there are some areas that need to be touched up. We did not get to that over the summer, but that will be something that's on our radar to get completed over Christmas vacation or spring break, it's something that's very clear, come in and to spray paint that.
What is a gym duct?
So, actually, in the gym, all of our HVAC ducts are running because it's an open ceiling, and so the paint eventually just because falls, happens to get...
It takes $3,000 to paint that stuff?
Well, because it's high, they bring in lifts and stuff like that, so...
I'm in the wrong business. I need to get into locker installation.
We can get you a paintbrush next summer.
Yeah. You might not think you're the safest ever to paint.
Get you a paintbrush and a long ladder.
Yeah. Moving on to the Cottage Grove office renovation that has been completed, there's some minor things, a few hiccups, but the office is put back together, it was ready for back-to-school. Reed has his new furniture in his office, and so if you take a stop by, you'll see how nice it is, just reminding that he has leather in his office. It's fake leather.
What is it?
He has, they look like leather chairs, they're fake leather, but he had some new office furniture because the previous principal's office had all built-ins, and so we couldn't remove that, so, had him a hard time.
And we pay him a big salary to have a group of fancy offices too?
He has a pretty fancy office, so hopefully not in it that much. Then also the playground site work, that is something that once the PTO is ready to move forward with the PTO, fundraising is complete, then we will contribute to $20,000. And so, that's something that will actually happen this spring, and if it doesn't happen, then that's something that we won't spend in the capital budget, so...
Can I just also ask about the office renovation? Was more than just that office?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It was also adding the sink to the nurses' office and changing the door, security for the workroom for teachers, I mean, there was a lot more than that, so I just hope people think.
That's, thank you. So, yeah, actually, just to go over the office renovation, we actually, in the front office, put up an additional office space for an administrative assistant, added a sink to the bathroom, added some additional office spaces throughout for like the TOSA, school psychs, and more of the student services people to be in there, and changed around the workroom. So it was a pretty big overhaul and add some security to that, so teachers are able to get into the workroom without having to access the main office.
And you said one of the things was adding the sink to the nurses' office, right? Because they didn't have a sink in there before?
The sink in the bathroom.
That's a big thing.
That was a big one, yeah.
They actually took us on a tour in there just before they did it up and showed us what they were going to do, that was neat. Give a watch for that.
The district office outside signage has not been completed yet, we wanted to focus on getting our schools ready, and so this will be the next thing that we will start working on. And the last two items at Taylor Prairie, having completed the I M C door frame replacement and our window replacements for rooms 39, 24. And the window room, the window replacements are actually on that long-range facility, that's something that was pointed out to the committee, so we got one thing checked off already, so...
Anything to add, Jeff?
No. It, surprisingly, since I walked in the door and there was a lot of things going from a lot of different directions and some contractors not really sure on when they were supposed to show up and what the logistics were, it all came to a conclusion here within the past few days, so it's turned out very well. Look forward to working to continue to improve the schools, and I saw the plan and read the plan, and look forward to being a part of that and making it happen.
But, yeah, like Jeff said, you know, he came in and with Mark leaving and having a schedule and then a new person coming in and our department being a little hectic, there was a lot of different things going on, so I do want to thank Jeff for stepping right in to building principals and the building ground guys to step in and making sure that we're getting ready for school and we'll be ready, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item I, Board Reports, the Community Engagement, Engagements and Government Relations Committee Report.
Can I just want to, I just want to thank Jeff and Jared also and the whole staff, the maintenance staff in high school, everybody they do a good job. This year was spectacular. You've got, all our areas that entered the classrooms in great shape, all areas of the public coming to the pool and auditorium and the gym are just immaculate. So, I know it was a lot of work, there was transition going on, and we had a couple of bumps, but it really is fantastic. Whatever appreciated was, it was really a bumpy, but I'm excited, so, thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Jeff?
All right. Let's see, we met the other day, we discussed doing some board member listening sessions, one at each school this year, but we decided we needed to get some consensus that board members would actually show up before we finalize some dates. We were thinking, if, you know, one at each school, we're thinking maybe doing something like bagels with the board, just have some food there in the morning for a half hour, 40 minutes. Informal, people have, teachers or parents or administrators have compliments, hopefully, or complaints, they can stop in, spend a few minutes with us. My goal would be at least two board members per thing, and hopefully everybody could at least do one. But if there is a consensus, we won't move ahead, if there is, the next meeting will start to finalize some dates, so...
What does everybody feel about that? Karen?
I'm more than willing to do that. I think that's a super idea, and I would volunteer to do it. When you said morning, I mean, if you think the logistics of that would work for either our teachers or our families, I mean, I know our principals are there before sunrise, but I don't know if that adds any chaos to what already is really difficult for drop-off time at the school.
It's not set in stone, but mostly, it seems to me, and I mean, everything's movable, but, you know, we've done the books or the donuts with that, and everything is in the morning, so it's like, there isn't a convenient time to just do it, so you got to pick a time.
Yeah.
And I'm open to changing, and we're open to changing, I think, if it's after school or whatever, but...
I love the idea of doing it, and I just check with the principals to make sure it would be okay.
Yeah, well, we've had some initial conversations, but I didn't have enough information to go back to.
I'd suggest you schedule one and try it out before you, set them all up that way.
Actually, I'd be very interested in doing it too whenever you set it up, but I'd suggest that you maybe ask the principals to ask at their next staff meetings what they think is the best time, because I'm not sure, donuts for breakfast is a little different when you're getting parents to come in with their kids and teachers are there, then asking teachers to, when they're trying to get their day ready, to come in and meet with us, and maybe it'll turn out that is their favorite time, but they may say lunch is better, or it may differ in different buildings. So I guess if you could give some feedback from teachers, I appreciate that before we...
To me, and maybe I'm wrong here, but it's really to reach the community more than the teachers.
Oh, okay.
If the teachers have anything they would like to talk to us, they're more than welcome to come.
Oh, okay.
But to me, it's, as a part of community outreach, I would, we want to reach out to the community.
It's more for parents than...
More for parents than teachers.
Maybe if you were a parent, a morning one first.
We found out that teachers aren't scared to contact us when they need to.
I'll volunteer.
Thanks, only one?
Susan?
I would just add too, I was also confused about that.
Depends on the quality of your bagels.
I said the same thing, is that a good time for teachers? And he said, but I'm not doing it for teachers, I'm doing it for your community.
Right.
So, so I asked Jeff to make sure he came to the board, understanding step two is clearly to administration, because if you guys don't want to do it, we weren't going to be able to go forward. So, is your thought, your input on mornings for community and any staff that's, because the staff may have different issues, so maybe, again, what's your input?
I...
Do the staff at lunch? We used to do it at lunch.
I would suggest that the committee go back and look at information from the principals and consider what you can...
We wanted to hear from you first, we will do that.
The thing is, do you want to do it? It seems like you guys have any complaints.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though Dean's only going to sign up for one, hopefully everybody else will fill in.
Yeah, well, only speaking for myself, it's easy for me to come in the morning before I have to go to work. So, not that the world revolves around working parents, but if you were like, when's it convenient for me? It's convenient for me at 7:15 in the morning.
Do you want to focus on staff or community first?
Whoever wants to talk to me, Ray. God help them.
Dean?
I would suggest we not make this a board discussion. Let Jeff work it out with the staff, and it may differ by school, and we can try it out at different times, and let's go and tell us when to show up.
Yeah.
And that's the thing...
And I would suggest that the focus...
We needed to know that you were going to show up, that's why we had a board discussion. Dean, I'm sorry if we took a little bit too much time here, but we thought it was important that we had your support.
I suggest you focus on community because that is the charter for me.
But the thing about my community, I want, my board, my committee, it's a living document, I'm completely open to, nothing we bring here is set in stone.
Teachers are part of our community also.
Correct, correct. But as I said earlier, teachers are not scared to contact us when they, I found that out in the last year, which is fine, it's just, whereas sometimes parents tend to, go ahead, yeah. Senior, another thing we talked about is senior outreach, we got to figure out a way to reach seniors, because we have a strong senior community in both of our communities, and want to do some things more than just calling bingo for them once in a balloon, right? So, want to find a way to, that we can help each other out, not just, you know, do something for them and think we're doing some good, but we help each other out. We've talked about contacting some of the senior leaders in the communities and, again, open to any and all suggestions, so...
Well, and remember, there are only two of us, so, like, I'm on the senior foundation in Monona, so we have direct contact there, but it would be really helpful if people had a name of somebody in another, in the rest of the community, so we could reach out to them.
Susan? I'd go back relative to that, to the original concept of this committee, which I thought was that you were going to add community members and possibly a couple of teachers to the committee as actual members, and that they would actually come to all your monthly meetings. And that way you could include a senior, you know, I know somebody from the Cottage Grove senior community who was very active and would be willing to reach out to Monona as well, I'm sure.
Judy Rowe.
Well, and there are a couple of people that you could think of that would be very interested, I think, in serving on this kind of committee. So to me, that might be a logical way to go, to consider broadening the membership of your committee, and then you have more voices, more ideas for outreach, and I just wanted to talk about that some more.
Yeah, our idea is, because everything we're doing is completely separate from everything else we're doing, that you put somebody on there, it might be interesting, senior outreach may not have any interest in all the other things, so that's why we were talking about subcommittees, to get people's expertise in that specific area, so that's kind of, but we're not there yet with the senior outreach to do that. And I don't want to bring people on when we don't have, I want to focus it in before we start to bring in...
I think part of the value of having an actual committee with five or six people on it is that they're part of the whole discussion of all of it. And I, that's, I guess that's so what I envisioned, that I'm disappointed to hear this subcommittee idea, because I just don't see that working very well. I think when you have, when you have a group of people, I mean, the senior person is also a community member, was also a parent, maybe a grandparent, they'll have similar ideas to tie in with other community members who may or may not be parents, because I think it'd be good to get some non-parents. I just would, I guess that'd be my suggestion, is you talk about that more, about expanding the full membership of your committee.
My answer to that would be, I sat with Dean when we did long-range training, long-range planning committee, right? We had, we were going to do five people, next thing you know, we're at 15, and next thing, you know, so if we really want to get expertise to handle all those things, we're going to have a 40-person membership. And I think that will bore and not interest a lot of people, but we can look into that, I'm fine with that.
Susan?
I've agreed with Susan on this, and we've actually talked about this, again, one of the things that's very difficult about this committee, and I think Dan could speak to that as well, if you want to have any input on that, is that there are only two of us, and there's a whole list of ideas. And I think with a representative community, a teacher, possibly an administrator, you know, a variety of community people, maybe a PTO person, then we can prioritize the list and start focusing on things, not just that Jeff and I feel are important, but the community feels are important. Because even the two of us disagree on what's most important, so, whatever you guys think.
I think this is some, these are some issues, I think, for the committee to work out and to develop, to work on, I mean, it's brand-new, and I think you need to work and develop some of these issues.
And lastly, we talked about the Herald Independent articles, I got some good initials signed up, we've had two great articles, the second one will be in today's paper, if you get it today or tomorrow. We need some more, it was nice of the union to mention it, and Dan mentioned it, and now you have people actually sign up. Since it's completely voluntary, I would love if everybody on the board would volunteer for one. I've started to target some people that I thought would have a good topic individually or something, who knows? I'm open to all suggestions. Would love to have some administration do it too, so, it's basically, yeah.
Susan?
I haven't seen the one for this week, because I got the paper tomorrow, but I was, I thought, yeah, the one that Jeff Otto wrote on the sixth was, the sixth edition was great, so, I think that's great, that's off to a good start. And my only question was, is why they didn't give them a byline?
Yeah, I don't know about that, because...
I guess I'd ask about that, because I think if they're going to the trouble of writing it, they should get credit with writing it and then...
Kevin's not here, when I sat with Kevin, that was the first thing he said, is, I'm going to need, I'm going to need a picture and a byline and a little thing, and then he doesn't put it, so I'm like, what?
And that was, so I would follow up with that, because I, maybe it was just an oversight, but I guess I'd like to see the teachers get credit for when they do this stuff.
And, and, not to interrupt you, but he said four to 800 words, I think Jess was over 800, so I don't know if he ran out of room, I don't know, so...
It looked like the complete art, it looked like, you know, the whole art.
I mean, but that may be why he didn't put...
Oh, oh, well...
And maybe, maybe not, I don't know, I'm just saying, yeah.
But anyway, that was my other question, is because, like, the next person has signed up for the September 14th one, do you have a process where you, like, just send them an email to remind them and remind them they need a photo, just to keep track of that, to keep it going?
I don't have that process, but I haven't had, I've only had two, and they both sent me their articles on time, right?
Okay.
But I said, please...
You might not have to do it, but I may be...
What I told them is, please send it to me so I know they did it.
Okay.
But I guess I could send an email a week ahead of time.
Before, just reminding?
Just reminding, right.
You're right, you're thinking you can add the photos, it would...
Well, that's, I mean, that was Kevin's one condition, and he didn't do it, so I don't know.
Oh.
So, other than that, we're open to any other ideas that anybody has, and anybody can come by at any time. One thing we have talked about is doing some government, kind of Madison engagement kind of thing, and maybe having like our reps and maybe Dan Ross Miller come in and explain what's coming up, so we can kind of be prepared for the upcoming session, because I know that they were quoted in the paper the other day saying, this time we're going to get aggressive. So, what that means to us is probably not good, but we should probably be prepared. So that's another thing we've talked about, and again, open any suggestions.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Policy Committee Report from Susan Fox.
The Policy Committee met on August 18, and Neola, part of the deal with working with Neola, if you remember, was that they send us updates, I think twice a year, so they said, they had a bunch of updates for some of the policies, even though we haven't adopted all of them yet, we're still working with through them. They had submitted updates for some of the series that we had gone through, so the last meeting consisted mostly of going through that, the 2,000 series, the bylaws, and the 1,000 series, and a couple of the ones in the 2,000 still need a little additional work. Otherwise, we're pretty much ready to go with the 3,000s, which is professional staff, and possibly 4,000s, which is support staff, and there'll be some overlap in terms of language for some of those policies, since they're staff-related. At our next meeting on September 2nd, which will be at 5:30, not 4:30, we're going to try to have all meetings 5:30 to 7:30 as much as possible now that Karen's back in the wood here and the summer's over. The one thing that, and we can't really talk about it tonight because we didn't put it on the agenda, but in going through to think about what to say tonight, one of the things that we got a little thing up on right at the end was one of their updated changes was in the definition of voting. They had added a sentence about electronic, that, in other words, that you, the statute says you have to be present to vote, and so that was in the definition originally. Neola added a piece that said that, you know, you can be present at meetings electronically, by phone or by Skype or some similar program, which we had had a discussion about before, and we've done that before, when I had asked about it last year at WSB, the advice I got was that we should take it on a case-by-case basis, whether we allow the person who's participating electronically to participate in discussion meeting, and then voting was another thing, we were inclined not to do that. Well, by putting it in the definition, it is making the decision for us that the person who's not physically present at the meeting but is participating electronically could also vote. And there may not, you know, the, the argument for that is, they are there, we can see them, they're clearly hearing all the discussions, they have all the material to vote, we can see that they're voting, because they can raise their hand on the screen or whatever. The kind of that, and what was brought up at the WSB meeting, is there are some boards who are having trouble getting people to come to meetings because they just don't pay, or they just don't show up, some boards actually have trouble getting quorums. And the point is that it changes the dynamic of the meeting a little bit, and you don't want people to get too comfortable thinking, oh, I'll just sit home in my living room and watch the meeting, be in the meeting on TV and vote, if you don't lose anything by not being here. So that's, that was the only kind. If you don't lose anything by not being here, so that's, that was the only kind. So we can't really talk about it tonight because it's not on the agenda. We did kind of say at the last, at the last policy meeting, we sort of wanted the idea of how the board members felt, if they all feel it's okay to have people vote when they're present electronically, we'd probably go ahead with this change, but, so we can put it on another board agenda for later, so just be thinking about it. Otherwise, that was all. We do limit our meetings to two hours, we're pretty strict about it, so we really didn't, even though the three thousands have been on our last two agendas, we haven't added them yet, but we will next time. We add to a couple of them, I guess, but anyway, okay, that's it.
Dean?
Keeps getting referred to that we have a Neola template. What does it mean to be working from the Neola template as opposed to any other template or any other references? So what, what does Neola give us, that WSB, or just revising, copying something from the Oregon School Board?
They, well, first of all, they have the entire manual, templates for the entire manual. WSB does not have that and they do not provide that service anymore. They did, they did provide it back in two thousand when they went through our policies. So basically, what's happened up to now is that Dan and various administrators, depending what policy related to, have met with the Neola consultant and gone through the entire manual. And they give you options, they have a template. It's a little different than, say, the WSB handbook template, although similar in that it'll have, you know, language outlined and then you can choose different pieces that you might want to put in. You can also, sometimes we've inserted our own language because we liked it better, or we've used most of Neola's and inserted a piece of ours. There's one where we might put in our whole policy instead of theirs because we like ours better. So there are choices that you make when you look at it, but it's, but it's all legally up to date and, and this, this recent giving us the update of these other ones was a good example. Transgender language was another example. I mean, they had, you know, they just update as laws change and as the demands change. And so it is, it is very helpful. It's time-consuming because we are giving a clear oversight. I mean, the process is, like when I sit down to prepare for a meeting, we have the entire three thousand, three thousand series, it's maybe twenty policies. Okay, I look at, twenty, however many it is. I look at what Dan has recommended for, say, two thousand and one, and then I look, if we had one similar to it, and sometimes we haven't had policies, there's some things that we, it's, it's nice to have policies now, things we didn't have it. Some of the Neola policies I didn't choose to include because I didn't think we needed it. So there's a lot of choice that goes on. Anyway, I look at that, then I look at the Neola temp, the original template to see what Dan selected, Dan or his, and his staff, I hope they didn't. Then I look to see if we had a policy similar and which language I like better, what are we losing, what are we gaining, and come to the meeting, prepare to make comments. That's how I prepare for it, for each meeting. So it's, I'd say, I put in probably three, four hours prior to each meeting to just go through all of that. So that's, that's the kind of oversight we're giving and that's why it's taking longer than I guess I would have thought, but it's still enormously helpful to have these templates to go by. And there's been a huge amount of work done administratively already, so the fact that we're taking a long time to get, there are nine, nine thousand, it goes up through the nine thousand, so that's how many we have. And they've, they're all ready, they're waiting for us to go through them all. But it's, you know, it's taken us some time, but I feel pretty good about it.
Can I, can I just add, because as a, as a committee member, I would, I would take that I and make it we because...
Oh, right.
This is exactly what we all do. You're just giving the detail. And in addition, I review all the statutes that are under our policy and the Neola template and the Neola revision and bring any of those...
And you can leave out the I because I don't do that.
Sometimes you do, didn't she? She did.
Well, if I catch it, I mean, whatever.
Take it back, take it back, as you do. And in addition, Neola gives us legal view, legal review by a law firm.
Right.
Got to forget, so.
It's Davis and Keele.
Davis and Keele.
And actually, they do school law, so that's the other benefit, we know the policies we're dealing are legally signed in.
Dean?
I think I've learned enough.
Kerry?
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna, if you've learned enough, I'll, I'll hold my comment.
No, no, that, no, it's, what I hear is that, is that one thing that's, the advantage of it is that you have some confidence that federal and state statutes as well as administrative, appropriate administrative rules are incorporated into them.
Right.
That's right. And I was going to additionally say, the Neola templates are a good starting point and yet I think there was tons of good work done in this district previously that both Susan Fox and Susan Manning have been mindful of rescuing from the chopping block and getting back into our new version of the updated policies because we're friendlier in our policies in many cases than what the Neola language starts off to be.
In terms of readability sometimes.
Yeah, and just the tone and that, you know, they're not combative necessarily feeling.
Neola seems to be rather legalistic and...
Right. And we intend these policies for people to be able to, to read through them and to feel like, it's to help people be successful in what they're trying to do.
We're all done, we won't need school boards because we all can use Neola.
All right.
I think there's a tremendous amount of value to being added.
If we can continue on.
If we took it as it was, we'd be done by now.
Thank you.
That was the point.
That's it.
All right.
That was the point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Item J, unfinished business discussion and possible approval of the school board policies four eleven, nondiscrimination and access to equal education opportunities, four forty-seven point two, student suspensions and expulsions, and five eleven, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity.
Okay, and here, again, because I did watch the board meetings, I watched your discussion on these policies as well, and it seemed to me that on four eleven and five eleven, there really wasn't much conversation, so I know if we could approve those with one motion maybe. And then four forty-seven point two, I guess my comment would be, I feel confident that the comments made in the meeting, the last meeting on August twelfth, were basically reflective of the kinds of comments that we had heard before and that we did take into consideration during our committee meeting. And as Dan stated earlier last week, we, the, the policy that we are bringing forward is the policy we feel is the best one. To the point about the education plan, we talked about that quite a bit, and Dan made the point again very clearly last week at the meeting, or last, last meeting, that you can't really develop a plan prior to an expulsion because it can't, there won't be one if there's no expulsion. So the fact that the wording is in there that says one will be developed, we felt strongly was sufficient. In addition, we had a former board member call me and say, he didn't like the word shall in there, that we shall provide this kind of plan because he thought that was tying us to that. And there are circumstances where we, it's not appropriate for us to, if a student, for example, ends up in detention, then it becomes the county's responsibility. But we felt that the wording we have allows for that because it says, "It will be provided consistent with applicable legal requirements" and that, anyway, we felt we were covered with that. As it says, as is deemed reasonable and appropriate. We felt, we covered all eventualities with languages in there. So we felt very clearly, we feel very confident bringing this policy forward the way it is. That said, I guess I would, I don't know if I can just move that we approve the...
Of course you can.
I move that we approve policy four eleven and five eleven as presented.
Second?
Is there any discussion of those two policies first?
Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just have a couple of questions on them.
Okay.
The, there's references in, I believe in both of those policies, that they seem to be very structured, formal, legalistic procedures that are necessary, but then it makes casual references to informal resolution. Then it doesn't go any further. What would be the type of, what would be an informal resolution of one that's captured, that's encapsulated into one that has to have, the alternatives are two days' notice here, five days' notice there, to proceed in all these, in each of these steps. What would be, when we dealt with, when we dealt with in the handbook on grievance issues, we did have opportunities to talk with immediate superiors informally and that sort of thing. So there's references to this. The other question I have is, it would seem to me that on any of these complaints, that there's these two-day references in there. And it seems to me that, that in some cases, a person who has, who has a complaint may themselves want to have outside counsel or something like that before they proceed with the complaint. And it seems to me that two days is, is, would be insufficient. Those are my two observations on them, that there's not, A, there doesn't seem to be any kind of institutionalization of an informal process other than going through investigations, notices, you know, hearings, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm not sure where you're getting that.
Is, is, is your comment?
I'm not citing a chapter and verse, but it's, you have them through both of these documents.
That they say informal or that imply informal?
There are no, A, there are no informal procedures, although they're referred to.
Well, a lot of this language is OCR language, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's right out of statute, it's right out of the law, and I, I see references to ten, five days, ten days, fifteen days, depending on what it is. There are complaints about discrimination in curriculum content, staff changes, you know, they're, they are pretty legal, so I, I'm not finding it informal either. If you can, if you can point out the area you're talking about.
It's also very similar, previous one, we just updated it with some of the gender language, so it's really, you know, the things they seem to complain about, we already had.
Dean, if you could please point out specific language that you're concerned about and if you want to take a moment to look that up, will we, is there any, is there other discussion?
I'll let it go.
Okay. The reason I ask, I just, I just looked to find the word informal in four one one and I only find it in, in languages being deleted, not in the remaining language. All right, any other discussion on four one one or five one one, or motion on the table? Okay, here, excuse me. All those in, see, the motion is to approve both four one one and five one one together. All those in favor, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Then I would move to approve policy four four seven point two, student suspensions, expulsions as presented.
Is there a second?
Uh, no, wait, go ahead.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, discussion?
Oh, can I amend that?
Yes, you can.
I have one amendment and one question.
Okay.
What should I go first?
Why don't you, I don't know.
Why don't I start with the question?
Okay.
You added, "The district shall provide continued educational services." Okay. By provide, I know that when we send somebody home with a, with an education plan to take classes at home to catch up, that's an extremely expensive venture for that family. By providing continued educational services, does that mean we pay for that? Or does that mean we say, here's your...
No, it says, "We will provide continued educational services, including a written plan with a designated district contract person." So it doesn't say...
To me, I would, that says that we would pay for it.
No, well, that's not the intent, and I would argue that it doesn't say that, but...
I would totally argue this is, we shall provide, how do you provide by saying, here you go?
Would you...
I would say we should, I would say that, I don't know if people understand how expensive it is to follow the rules.
Okay, would you, is there, do you have a suggestion for amendment to the language?
No, I mean, I think, I think we should provide. So I think as long as it says we provide, then I, I mean...
We do. And I would interject that as well, saying we should provide services, that means whatever it takes, whether it be providing a teacher, providing, you know, online courses.
If we say online courses, then they shouldn't have to pay hundreds of dollars to take that online.
And that is our practice.
But it is our practice, really.
Yeah.
It's not according to people I've talked to who are writing the checks, so.
Okay. Then I'd like to, no other information, but we provide services.
Is that a communication issue perhaps? So the intent here is that we would provide, we shall provide some of these services and we will pay for some of these services. That's correct.
We, to me, it says we provide educations needed to come back to fulfill your obligations.
As deemed reasonable and appropriate.
We say you, you have to, you're expelled, you have to do A, B, C, and D, right? So that means we would, we provide these services, that means we provide these services.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's the intent, because you're talking about counsel, you're talking about all kinds of stuff there, and that's, and that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about educational services. You know, I would accept an amendment to say, "The district shall provide a written plan for educational services," if you think that's more clear.
Now, I mean, I think it's, to me, it's, this is, that's how I'm reading this, so I want to make sure it's clear. I mean, you can...
Well, I, educational services, but I think it's clear from what Dan just said that, yes, we do provide the educational services. That doesn't mean, I mean, a counseling plan or whatever, those are not educational.
So all educational services and not over and above educational services? Because we're gonna, yeah.
And the question is, does the language match what, match our intent?
I see, well, and I wasn't aware that we paid for online courses and stuff. I thought, I thought the families didn't pay for that, but you're saying the district pays for that, so then, so then the language is fine, for sure, if we actually do that.
You seem, you like the language.
I do like the language. That's what I wanted to say, but...
So that was your question?
That's my question.
Okay, your amendment.
My amendment would be that we strike number one from both suspensions and expulsions.
Number one.
The student is guilty of repeated refusal or neglect to obey rules.
And you want, you want, your amendment is to strike it from both, from both sections or suspension?
Right, because I think it's too broad and too simple.
Okay, well, so if you make an amendment, then it's a second.
Yeah, go ahead, make, if you want.
I meant that we, we strike number one, noncompliance of school or board rules, and number one, the student is guilty of repeated refusal or neglect to obey rules.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it till we can finish the discussion that Jeff wants to have.
What is the amendment at this point?
We're striking number one.
I see it here as...
He wants, he wants to strike the language, if I may, under suspensions where it says, number one, noncompliance of school or board rules, and under expulsions, number one, the student is guilty of repeated refusal or neglect to obey rules. On page two, right.
Jeff, did you have more comments you wanted to make?
Well, I think, I just think that lowers the bar for suspensions, expulsions. I think it leaves a huge gray area in how can you suspend one kid for breaking a rule and not another? And I just think, I think we need to be, I think in our, what I noticed the other day at breakfast, our district mission is we, we educate all students, and to me, all students is every single student, not just the ones that have followed the rules and we really like. I think that it's important to me and to our community and, and research that says punitive doesn't work, that's, these are the kids that we really need to reach, we really need to work with, and those are the kids that need our help the most, and I want to help them. And I think it's, I just think it's, it's too broad and too...
Kerry?
I hear the point about that being broad, and I think if you struck that first category, you'd still be left with some pretty good meaty additional reasons for either suspension or expulsion. The remaining clauses have more specific language and outline terrible things, so, you know, I think I could go along with the idea that that first one is broad, presuming that we just pause and look at those other ones and make sure they are robust enough to handle the situations and not too narrow, because the first one being a little broader allows you to capture in something. And this is one, I guess, I would also be interested in Dan's comment on, specifically if we got rid of that first statement that's kind of broad, would the remaining one still be enough to get the work done that would need to be done?
Sure. I'd say absolutely not. The first one is the only reason we generally suspend students. The other ones very rarely occur, the other ones, independent of severity. I don't disagree that we want to work hard to reduce the number of suspensions, but to me, to have this discussion for the first time and then all of a sudden amend a policy, this needs to be a very lengthy discussion in board work and committee if we want to talk about a different, you know, plan. And we've talked in the past about, you know, the Madison Plan. Theirs is very different, it's not just a matter of the learning of that, but as you know, a lot of other work. And so I absolutely be open to that discussion and, but I'm concerned about at this point...
Can I amend my amendment?
Hang on a second. Susan?
This again is statutory language, these are the statutory reasons for, that you're allowed to do suspensions and expulsions. And I, I think looking over the history of our expulsions at least, because suspensions don't come to the board, we have been very judicious in using this, and I, I think that when you have, when you expel a student, it is always a last resort. It isn't just for breaking a couple of rules. It's for very egregious disruptive behavior that impacts all the stu, other students in that student's class, in the building, it interferes with the ability of the adults in the building to do their work with the other students. So you're, so the purpose of the expulsion is to serve everyone, really, and I think in some of these cases, you know, we've had parents say, this has been the wake-up call that has caused the student to get the help they needed to come back. I mean, our kids do tend to come back. They, after they've, they complete their coursework, they do anger management counseling, or they do whatever is recommended, and they do tend to come back and I think generally are successful. So to me, that's a very key piece that we absolutely need to leave in, and I would not be in favor. And that's why the committee brought forward this policy in its current form, because this is the way we believe we should leave it. So that's, that would be my recommendation, would be leave it in there.
Jeff?
Can I amend my amendment?
Yes, you may.
I would like to amend my amendment that we only strike it out for expulsions and not suspensions, because I think, I think suspensions are one thing, but expulsions are a completely other thing. And I think that, you know, I know you don't want, but you aren't here with this, I mean, how many times have I said this? I said, I said this last meeting I was going to do this.
On the, on the second part, yeah.
Right, so I would, I would, I would amend it to say, it's just number one on expulsions, because I don't think that we can, and we don't serve everybody by kicking them out. We actually don't serve anybody when we expel these kids, I don't think.
Does it?
Technically, he had a second.
What's that?
He had a second on that, so it's difficult for him to amend it after the second's-
Well, he's, he can, he can amend the amendment, and I need a second on that.
Exactly.
Because it's now our, it's now our amendment.
Hang on a second.
You can't do a friendly, there is no such thing as a friendly amendment. It's, it's, the amendment belongs to us now that it's been seconded, so you can make an amendment, which you just did, to amend your amendment, and then that needs a second.
All right. So, does somebody like to second that?
That's fine. Second.
All right. So we're discussing the amendment and the amendment in, at this point, which, and as, as amended, blah, as amended, it would, we would only strike the language from the expulsion portion of the policy. Susan?
I'm going to comment again, and, and this has been, so, we've brought this to the board at least three times for discussion. And this is, and we have brought this to committee. And there's actually a committee member who has made no mention of this concern or this issue prior to this, understanding that board discussion might bring it up differently. We reviewed this in committee at least three times, and I'm betting four, if in fact, this was going to be an issue from the committee, that needs to be addressed and happened there. And the only reason I'm bringing this up at this point is because this happened once before, not too long ago, and that was concerning to us as a committee. So we either have to function as a committee, and what I've done when it's been a three to, a two to one vote, I've said, "I want to let you know, I'm really torn with this. I want to make sure this comes up, and here's a board discussion on it." But we had no comment on that. So, one, the process concerns me, and two, that, again, we've been talking about this for a solid two months. This needs to come to the committee so we can have this discussion.
Well, we can vote on these amendments.
That's right. We'll, we'll amend the amendments, and we can, if you wish to call a question-
I think your point is well taken regarding the committee.
At this point, you can, you can do so.
As a former policy committee member, I've made it perfectly clear that I thought that didn't belong in there when we discussed this.
And you've made it clear to the board.
Right.
Okay. Discussion on the merits of the, of proposed amendments?
I mean, I'm, I'm going to oppose the second amendment as well, because I just made the case for the expulsion. I think, I think we absolutely need to leave it in on both categories to give our staff-
I just want to say, when you think most people have fulfilled their obligation to come back to school and excel, are you just, are you-
I don't think so.
Done well. Where does that come from? Does that, do you have anything backing that up, or is that just a way to pass the amendment? Is there anything backing that up?
I, I have not seen a list of students, and that's when I've asked the question, that's what I understood, that most of them, because some I've known about, I've known have come back. I, I, yeah, so I, I'd retract that, I'd want to retract that. I, I do stand on the statement that I made, that, that we use it very judiciously. Our staff does a lot of work with these kids, and we don't, that's why we don't have many expulsions, because it is a last resort, and I think sometimes when it is, it's very clear that, that it is the, that it is necessary. And that's how I feel about it. And I, nobody likes to have to have it get to that point, because sometimes that is what it takes. And I think there are all kinds of factors that go into, I mean, you know, we need, we clearly need better mental health services all around there. There are all kinds of societal issues you can point to here. I don't for a minute believe it's totally the school system's failure when that happens. I know you differ with me on that. But I think that there are all kinds of issues that, and we cope with a lot of issues, a lot more issues than teachers and schools maybe had to cope with twenty years ago. That's today's reality. But I think the reality is also that there are simply some kids where we just can't do it without removing them for a period, and whether it's because of serious substance abuse problems, and they need to get, and that's causing the behavior problems. Whatever the situation is, if they can't function in our environment, and whatever our staff is able to do is not working, we have to have this as an option, and we use it very judiciously. If we were having ten of these a year, I'd be very upset about it, but we really don't. And I think with the cases we've had, they've been justified, and so I'm not in favor of changing anything on the amendment as it's presented, as, on the policy as it's presented.
Dean?
I, I think, I think your case, Susan, is well made. But almost everything that I've heard in our expulsion hearings and what you've said tonight are captured in two through five. They are, and, and I think part of the argument, particularly, I think, repeated refusal and neglect tends to make a better case, particularly under the, under the other one where it simply says rules, which may be overly broad. I, I do think that, from all of I've, I've heard, and I agree with virtually everything you've said, Susan, but I, I've never heard of any of those students or the behaviors described as being simply a fusal to obey, obey rules. It's, it's, it's behaviors that you're two, three, four-
It's repeated refusal and neglect. It is number one.
Hang on a second. Jeff?
I think, if there is a safety issue, it's important that we expel. Right? If there isn't a safety issue, I don't think it's a failure of the school and the people in the school. I think it's our responsibility, which is the difference. So I think safety is covered in two through five. But if, if there isn't a safety rule, then I think it's our responsibility. As much of a burden of a responsibility as it is on us, I do think it's our responsibility per our district mission statement.
Susan?
I would, I'm seriously concerned about the board making this decision without very clear administrative input. So I would like to suggest gently that we consider holding on this. Let Dan take this particular amendment to the administrative council, specifically the principals, and ask for very clear and specific input on this. Because if in fact, I'm going to vote tonight on this, I'm not going to do it until my principals say I can live with it or without it. Because this is statutory, and I have a serious concern with deleting it without their input.
Okay.
Well, you could speak to that now? I mean, I just think you've probably got input. I think we could speak tonight about that.
I really appreciate your comments, and I am very comfortable speaking to that right now. I have had many, many conversations with Dr. Brost about, there's any time we have, you know, significant discipline issues, we have a conversation about that. And so I agree that's something that should be used, you know, hopefully never, or so very, very sparingly. I can say without, you know, talking about specific cases, that, you know, in, you know, my over fifteen years as a school administrator, and I've been involved with many, many expulsions, and even in districts where there were more than, than, than not fit the same criteria as here, where I absolutely agree, you know, with that, it's very, very uncommon. I think I have one ever that used that. But to take it out, there just might be that one circumstance. And again, the statute says, "May expel." Ultimately, it's up to the Board of Education to decide. And the statute is very clear that the Board of Education needs to make their decision where the certain behavior must demand the expulsion. And so by having that in there as, as an option, doesn't mean that anyone, it ever has to be fulfilled, and ultimately, the seven board members make that final decision. But I'd hate, you know, it's hard to pull up an example where that might happen, but it very well could be, behavior is so severe that, yeah, it does demand that expulsion. So I, I would, you know, absolutely support it, and I think I can talk on behalf of the principals as well, and support you in that.
I don't think that, my comment would be, one of the important things, though, is that the board and the administration be as close as possible on the same page as to what, what, and I hate to be in the situation where the administration has, and the principals have, one set of expectations and the board has another. So I'd say, I think it's important that we, we hash this out, so that we all agree that what is, what is appropriate behavior. The issue I have with number, with number one here is that they are fairly vague, fairly general. And you get in the situation, well, why was this student was expelled for doing something three times versus this student, you know, was allowed to continue the tenth, you know, stay in school after they did the same behavior the tenth time? And, and the other thing is that there's minor infractions. Now, I know you use this judicially, judiciously, but I'm thinking that it may be possible to express this particular item in a more judicious way. So it's a little clearer what it is that constitutes expelable behavior. And that will help the board and help the administration. We all understand that. And how many times is the behavior, how does it affect, I mean, and, and actually, I think the other, the other thing is, item five duplicates number one in, I think, item five, to me, reads just like number one. I mean, it's the same intent as number one, except that it has much more stringent language. And that, and item five is, "The student repeatedly engaged in conduct while at school or under the supervision of school authority that disrupted the ability of school authorities to maintain order or an educational atmosphere at school." Which is, if you ask me, that's what number one is. We're not going to expel for minor infractions. We are, however, that are repeatedly done. We are going to expel for infractions or violations of the rules that, that, to use these words, that prevent us, that, you know, disrupt the ability of school authorities to maintain order or educational atmosphere. That's what we're after. Safety is addressed in other ones. So I think language five actually covers number one. And I would like, what I would like to see somehow is the language of number one firm up, or we approve this as is, and then you come back to us with sort of guidelines of how number one would be applied.
Except that, number five reads, "The student repeatedly engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of school authority that disrupted the ability of school authorities to maintain order or an educational atmosphere at school or an activity supervised by a school authority, and that such conduct does not constitute grounds for expulsion under numbers one through four above." So clearly, the statute felt that five is very different from number one. I, I, to me, to me, Dan made a key point, which I meant to make and forgot, so thank you for making it, which is that when an expulsion comes to this board, at least four of us have to agree that the behavior was so egregious that we are going to uphold the expulsion. If we don't, because we don't feel it's been proven or that it rises to that level, we don't approve the expulsion. I think to eliminate the option is dangerous, and I cannot support eliminating that option. I think we have to give our staff that flexibility. I think the history is that they have been very judicious in using it, and I'm fully in support of leaving the language exactly as it is. And we can talk about this the next time an expulsion comes up. Or if you want some guidelines for behavior, I think you can ask for that. That's another option prior to that, you know, if you just want more input on what kinds of steps are taken before this happens. But I, this is statutory language, and this is common in most school districts throughout the state, I assume, and I, I just don't see any reason to change it.
I would make a suggestion, however, that, in line with, with Jeff's, that, that if we added the language, "The student, number one, the student is guilty of repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules," when, when that action disrupts, seriously disrupts the ability of school authorities to maintain order or an educational atmosphere. I would have meant, meant one to say that. And we don't have to define, but that's what I would do to this language.
Well, if we vote tonight, I mean, I, we already have two amendments on the floor. Could we vote on those perhaps?
When we're done with the discussion, we can.
I may call a question in a minute.
Yeah, you're free to do that, Susan.
I'm ready to. I'm going to ask again that we send this back to administration, to the principals, and ask them specifically. They've heard this conversation. They're sitting in this room.
I think we've heard it.
I'm, I'm saying, I don't, I want to either validate that what we're doing, I agree a hundred percent with you. This is their discretion. It's their decision. I'm recognized, I get to finish.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Sorry, you can't yet.
Can I make a suggestion? If you want to sense this, send this, this back to the administration.
Okay.
Just make a motion. Don't argue about it. Just make a motion. That's all you have to do.
Technically, he's, he's got, we're-
You can make another motion.
Not within the context of this. You really can't. You can't. You gotta, it's, it's an action amendment versus within the context of this procedure. But since you have directed me to do that, I will, I will make a motion that this specific language, the entire policy, specifically one and one, be sent back to the administrative principals for their input on either, basically, to accept or change or make modifications.
Tell me one second. You're essentially making a motion to table this and send it back for recommendation?
Postpone.
Yes, postpone. Yes, thank you.
Well, I guess with, I don't know if that, I mean, I can't discuss it until a second, and I'm reluctant to second that. I don't see it making any difference in changing any minds here. I mean, Dan has spoken that he feels confident he can speak. I've had conversations with principals. I know they believe that this is important, so I'm, I'm comfortable voting tonight, so-
Well, it's interesting that I, you can't even get a second to send it back and ask for the people that we pay salaries to give us their advice, to give us their advice on this. I'm really-
Thank, okay. We got it.
Appalled.
All right. The motion fails for lack of a second, unless you wanted to second it, Jeff?
No, I just-
Okay. All right. The motion on the table is-
I say one last thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to override it. I'm going to, Carrie, do you have any, any objection to it?
I'm going to call a question, too. I mean, I was prepared to approve this policy tonight.
Well, we've got a couple of questions in front of us.
I thought it was important to respect Jeff's interest in discussing it, but I would really call a question and say, do we want to start voting on these amendments?
Yes, right. Procedurally-
That's where I'm at.
Okay.
So, let's go.
But procedurally, if you, I mean, I, I would suggest that we simply drop the, we just take the amendment up as one item, which is to amend, to strike the language from under expulsions, item one, the student is guilty of repeated refusal-
You can't do that. You have to, he made, we had two motions, two seconds.
We gotta vote for all of them.
You gotta vote on-
That's the easy part. Call the votes.
Okay. The first motion is to, any, hang on, hang on, hang on a second. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to amend the original amendment? Jeff?
I just want to say, is our goal to get rid of self-problems or change behavior? If our goal is to change behavior, then we, then I think we need to-
First, let's dispense with, the first motion is just procedural, because it changes your amendment. Any further discussion on this? Okay. What I'm going to ask for is a vote on the amendment to the amendment, which is to make the, which will result in the amendment on the floor that we will be discussing, will be only the language related to the expulsions, number one, and we will drop the consideration of the suspensions. Okay? Everybody got that?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Motion fails, which means what we're doing, discussing is a motion, is a motion to discuss, the motion to the main amendment, which is, to the, sorry, to the policy, which is to remove number one from both suspensions and expulsions. Any further discussion, or any discussion on this item? Jeff?
I've been making something.
Any additional suggestions or motions to amend the language? I would like to make a motion that we amend expulsion number one, "The student is guilty of repeated refusal or neglect to obey rules," and add the words, "When such actions disrupt the ability of school authorities to maintain order or an educational atmosphere at school or an activity school supervised by a school authority."
So you're making an amendment to that amendment, or you're going to vote on that?
I'm ammending, I'm amending, that's right. I'm amending-
He's amending the main amendment, but can you read that again?
Okay. So I, I am, I am amending sentence one, "Under expulsion," so it reads, the student, the proposal is, "The student is guilty of repeated refusal to, or neglect to obey rules when such actions disrupt the ability of school authorities to maintain order or an educational atmosphere at school or at an activity school supervised by a school authority."
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, Susan?
I'm going to oppose that again, just because the grounds of this is statutory language. I think it's fine. It's served us well all these years, and I don't want to mess with, with legal language.
Jeff?
One thing, I get that it's statutory language. I want to raise the bar from the statutory language, because I think we're bigger than the state, we're better than the state. And also, I don't understand what the difference is between what you added and what is there now. Can you explain that?
I, I just think it's-
All, all it does is it put clear language-
It's coming in tonight, and I don't think it's wise to put in extra language.
Hang on a second, Susan. What, what the amendment does is it just makes it clear that, that, that the expulsion is based not just on refusal of rules, but when that refusal to obey the rules detracts from the ability of the, of the administration to maintain order or an educational, what is it, order or an educational atmosphere. In other words, it's really, it truly is disruptive. Okay? Any further discussion? Carrie?
Can I just ask Dan how he feels about that wording? Or would you prefer it is the original? I just want your professional opinion.
I'll be honest, I'm not sure how that might impact any potential, and so-
We're not sure.
My preference would be to leave the statutory language.
I just wanted to hear it. Thank you.
My comment to that would be, I believe that that is our practice. We, we expel for multiple, you know, we expel for multiple, you know, just various rules because it, it disrupts the order and the educational atmosphere. That's why we do it. I think it just reflects our needs. Okay? Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the amendment?
Of your amendment?
Of my amendment to your amendment. That's correct. As stated? All in favor? Susan, why are you saying aye?
That's your voice voting.
You mean, roll call?
Roll call.
Starting with Dean?
No.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
No.
No.
Motion fails. All right. The, we're back to the motion where we, we have struck language, actually, mine didn't quite work out, but we all got the gist of it. Were we striking number one from both the expansion and expulsion portions? Any discussion?
Roll call vote.
Starting with Dean?
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
No?
No.
No.
Motion fails. All right.[1769.22] Motion fails. All right, all in, so we're back to the unamended policy, policy as presented. Any further discussion? Dean?
I have an amendment.
Great.
On the very, the new language on the educational plan at the very end, the amendment that I have, I didn't make enough copies, but I think, I think when you hear it, it'll be clear. I would, I would, or it says delete, "The district shall provide continuing educational services," that, I would, I would, I would add there, "Expulsions shall be accompanied by a written educational plan that will assure meeting the necessary credits required for graduation and the name and contact information of a district professional educator who will serve as advisor during the period of suspension or expulsion." Now, to me, this, this defines this service a little, a little better. You've got written plan in there, and you have the contact person, but I think that the educational plan ought to be broad enough that it could lead to graduation. The key thing, I think, is the goal, is to get to graduation, and the, and the things that I've heard at the half a dozen hearings that I've been to are very vague references to educational plans. The testimony of, of both in and out of that those sessions are, well, there's a plan, and we get to it, but we don't quite see what it is, and I've, and I think we've gone through this for at least three or four series of it. I would like to see a written, a written plan, there's plenty of time to do it, the, and I think the plan ought to be such that it is aimed towards, it is aimed towards graduation. And I say this particularly in the last instances that we've had where the students were largely AP, advanced students and so forth, who, and, and we, I think we want to try to make every effort as a school to do that. I also, I also know, and you've heard me say this before, it differs by culture, but in the United States, by and large, it's high school graduation and getting to, particularly for a female to get to become age 18 or 20 and not be pregnant, and to have graduated from high school gives you opportunity, and I think our efforts ought to be to deal with that. I voted against the other amendment. I do think, I do think that the rules are a bit overly broad, but I'm, what I've seen here is our practice has been to use this very sparingly. What I've not been impressed with is the vague references to educational plans. I've also been concerned about the contact person and that sort of thing. I think you need to have a case manager. That's why I offered this amendment, to hopefully clarify that more, so.
Can I ask you a question, Dean, before we proceed? The current language is, "The district shall provide continued educational services, including a written plan, with a designated con, designated district contact person." That is, that is the language that's presented. Is that language sufficient? Hang on a second, hang on a second. Dean?
Well, my amendment has the idea of, of making sure that that plan will address the necessary credits leading to graduation.
Okay, hang on. I just wanna, I just wanna clear, I just wanna clarify, break it down one piece at a time, you, because you talked about...
That's a good start.
That's, that's a good start, and then you wanna add language that the plan includes, what's your language again?
Could I ask for a break so we can get written copies of this? Because this is too lengthy for us to see.
Jeff, can you pass that around?
I specifically asked that we get this ahead of time.
Hang on a second. Dean, how many copies do you have?
This is not, when there's a long amendment, I think you...
I thought I had plenty, but I don't. Excuse me.
Okay. While we're waiting, do you, let's just, okay, we, I'm asking about clarification.
I mean, I thought my language is pretty clear, but I...
Okay.
Look, there's a concerning change in the sound of wording, but I guess I would think to your point that we, this, that we could add here where it says, "The district shall provide continued educational services, including a written plan," and then add the words, "with a goal of staying on track for graduation, comma, with a designated district contact person." The words designated district contact person, to me, do mean someone who's going to, give the name of the parents, you, well, first of all, you always have the meeting with the person to, in the beginning, the parents have the name of that person, that is, who is going to work with them, that is their contact person. So I don't understand how your language is any different.
No, that's not, not true. The testimony we had, Susan, the testimony that we've had is, is that when we ask, when we ask the parent to predict, I remember in one case, is that I was told to call the school.
That was during a suspension, not an expulsion.
No, no, it was, it was during expulsion hearing.
Right, but the period that you were talking about was the suspension period, not the expulsion period, because the person hadn't been expelled yet at that time.
Well, but I...
So I'm just saying, I, once they're expelled, my understanding is the practice is, they come in and have a meeting, and usually it's the guidance counselor and the parents.
My language, I don't see where my language doesn't do what you want to do.
Well, my concern was the way it starts, because it sounds like you have to have it at the time of the expulsion hearing, and that's not gonna be the case. So I, that's why I wanna see it written, because it wasn't written.
You've asked for educational plans at the expulsion hearing, and we haven't had them.
And we're not going to get those. We've made that very clear. They won't be ready until after the student is expelled.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so you're talking about suspensions here, and you're not even talking about suspensions. This is why we need to see it written. Because it says, "Suspensions shall be accompanied by a written educational plan."
So, hang on a second, yeah, let's clarify that. You're talking about suspensions only, this language?
I'm talking about suspensions exceeding school date. I took that out in my verbal discussion.
Oh.
Well, then I have a problem, because suspensions are sometimes only a day.
Well, it says exceeding 15 school days.
Well, they can't exceed 15 school days unless...
Unless they're going to expulsions.
Well, that's, they are five days unless you go into expulsion.
Right, that's what it's...
And then they can only go to 15. You have to do, you have to act on the 15, so that doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, it doesn't make sense, take it out, Susan.
Well, you did take it out.
Isn't this under expulsion?
I took it out in my verbal.
So what it should be is suspensions exceeding five days, because then we're going to expulsions, and then you're gonna, no, it's going to be 15 days.
On expulsion, I would like to see a written plan in front of it at the time of expulsion.
Well, that, but that's not what this says.
Okay, so, hang on a second.
If you will take out the words, I'll dictate the words to you, so it's very clear.
Okay.
Take out the word suspensions exceeding 15 days, or, then start with the word expulsion.
Expulsions, I got it, okay.
That's what I read to you.
So it should say, "Expulsions shall be accompanied by..."
I have the copy we just got. I'm sorry, Dean, we're just trying to...
I, what I read to you, Susan.
That's all right, but we've got, I'm sorry, we do need to reconcile it with what we have written in front of us. Suspension, expulsion shall be accompanied by a written educational plan, which will assure meeting the necessary credits required for graduation, the name, contact, and district professional educator who will serve as an advisor during the period of suspension or expulsion. That is your motion?
Yeah.
Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Motion has been seconded. Discussion on the motion, the amendment, motion to amend. Dean, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Dean, who has made the motion to discuss it first. Where would you place this, Dean?
It would replace the...
What would you strike and where would you put it?
It would, it would go at the end, it would strike the language that you have.
Well, except for that sentence, "The educational services shall be provided," consists of applicable legal advice, I'd like to leave that in there.
Which one?
So you would just strike that first sentence and add yours, and then can we leave that second sentence, "The educational services provided to expel..."
Give us a paragraph of the line. Where do you want this to go?
It's a P, yes, you can't change it, but it would be, you'd be striking that first red sentence and putting this...
Like Susan's doing.
And putting this sentence in instead.
And in some sense, in some sense, the highlighted language is stronger because it says shall provide.
Right.
All right.
Well, it says, "Shall be accompanied by..."
Well, it's, "Shall be accompanied by a plan." This one says, "Shall, we shall provide the services."
Yeah, this is gonna be strong, but I...
And, and I think the word assure is, I'm gonna comment on this, it's my turn, I think the word assure is, we can't assure that the student will meet this.
That's right.
I think the plan, I think the problem would, the plan would have to be consistent, but we could give them a plan that's consistent with meeting necessary credits required for graduation, but we can't assure that they do it.
That's why I had with staying on track, with the goal of staying on track for graduation was to...
Yeah, I think it needs a little...
It's kind of...
Dan, do you have any comments about this?
Yeah, well, typically, in an expulsion order, the recommendation that comes from the administration, you know, very rarely, in fact, you know, is it ever simply expelled till age 21 with nothing else, it's usually conditional reinstatement, and in there, it's stated right in the expulsion order what needs to be done during that timeout, and it will state, you know, the number of credits or, or something to that effect. And so the education plan would match up the expulsion order. But I agree, I mean, it really would depend. If we have an expulsion with a student who is extremely credit deficient, well, then by, while they're expelled, they're not gonna get back on pace for graduation, they're gonna move towards, you know, the same progress that we would want, or, you know, while they're in school, but without question, the goal is there. I mean, that's what we want, is for the student to graduate, but that plan may very well vary, but that's generally the case, is where they need to, you know, stay on pace.
I mean, I can't imagine you would come up with a plan that would be all a bunch of electives that would account for any credits they needed. I mean, I just...
Usually focus on actually the core content, you know, the...
Absolutely, Dean, but I think that was the point. So I don't think this is necessary, but I...
Anyone else?
Well, I would like to see a written, fiddle with the language if you want to. I'd like to see a plan presented at the time of the hearing that we have, that would, that would be projected so that if the student could be on track to graduate, okay? And what we've had is nothing, except the name that, that there will be something provided. Now, it's a, and that's the concern that I have when, when I see the plan. I haven't really questioned the need, the need or the, or the expulsion. I'm concerned that we have an investment there, that, that we can continue that, and I would hope that as a board, we would have the same goal, and if, and if the language is a little bit different on the verbs of the order of battle here, then amend it.
The point has already been made that we will not have a plan at the time of the expulsion hearing. That simply will not happen, because it doesn't, it's not logical. The plan is developed after the expulsion occurs. If the board chooses not to expel the student, there will be no education plan, the student comes back to school. Therefore, you don't draw up the plan before the hearing, and I thought Dan made that point very clearly the last meeting.
Is that clear? Is that a current practice? Is that we don't...
Right, because we develop the plan in collaboration with the student and the parent.
After the expulsion occurs.
Out.
Again, the statute clearly states that when that comes to the board, when the expulsion recommendation comes to the board, you have three choices. You can accept it, you can deny it, and you can modify it. So they aren't expelled until after that action of the board.
Of course.
So there isn't a plan until they're expelled, by, even by the language that Dean is using.
There, I mean, but however, the question is, is there a way to see the plan at the time of expulsion?
No.
I think, I think Dean's concern is, the fact that the student, doesn't mean you couldn't have a proposed plan, Susan, even if it's not in place, it could, doesn't mean it couldn't be a proposal of a plan.
Right.
I mean, the question is, is Dean's concern is that we wants to be able to see that the plan is in place at some point promptly relative to the expulsion. And the other concern is, I think that you have, is that we suspend a student, we expel a student, it can be 15 days, it can be weeks before that student knows whether or not they're expelled.
Exactly.
And at this point, that they have, they have lost significant academic time.
Since I've been here, we've expelled everyone.
That's the concern, and how do we address that?
That's addressed up here, that's under suspensions, where it says, suspended students, and this is also statutory, shall be allowed to make up any examinations or classwork missed during the suspension period in accordance with the district student attendance procedures. A student, a district contact person will be provided to assist in the provision of continuity of current coursework, because at that point, they're not taking online courses, they're continuing in the courses they are in during the period of suspension. At the point there is an expulsion, if there is an expulsion, they no longer, generally, unless it's two weeks or a year ago or something, a very unusual circumstance, they are no longer going to continue their current coursework, it wouldn't make sense, they would usually start over with some other program. I mean, that's where...
Hang on a second, but it does say, suspended students shall be allowed to make up examinations or classwork missed during the suspension period, missed during the suspension period, which means that when they are, they, when the suspension period is over, that's when they can make up.
No, they can make up during it. They try, the student, one of the students we expelled this last time had been turning in his work during that whole period and getting credit for it. I mean, that was the testimony.
Is that the normal practice, that they would be allowed to continue, continue their economic work during the suspension?
Sure.
Yeah, sometimes they have to write daily to pick up materials, all of that now, because it's electronic.
But I believe I eliminated that because of the discussion here. I, I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the expelled student.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
We're absolutely in agreement as far as what that plan should contain, you know, the goal is to, you know, for graduation, we're in agreement that there should be an education plan, this, you know, proposed language, you know, from a committee, says the district shall, okay, that's not an option. I also agree that the board has every right to know, what is that plan? What I disagree with is that at the same time as the expulsion hearing, what I would recommend is that if the board wants to see the plan, if there's an expulsion, come back to the next board meeting, we'll present the plan to you, and so you can see that we actually did follow up with that. But the plan has to be developed in collaboration with the parent and student, there's several options given. We don't just say, you're gonna do four online courses. We ask them, do you have internet access? Do you need that? Correspondence courses, there's lots of different options, and so we work together on that plan. And the last thing I think I need to say, without being able to talk about specific cases, I can say this, that the board has not gotten completely accurate information with regard to what the school has and hasn't done, and I take exception that administrators didn't do their job. You didn't hear the other side of the story about all the efforts that administrators have made many times to contact parents and students, and I'll say point blank that you have gotten some inaccurate information. We take this, and we do take very seriously, and the board, the policy spells it out, you know, so there's no debate any longer about how we're gonna do this.
I think, I think that...
Well...
Go ahead, Dean.
Dan, what you just said will satisfy me. If you want to amend, if you want to suggest an amendment here, that the, the board in X number of days or something like that can have, can see that plan afterwards, I'll, I'll be happy with it. I've, I've, the only thing I've known is I've expelled students, and I have no idea that, that there is a plan there, and then I presume we could have some accountability of its execution.
I, I think this language, it really is important, you know, as you know, this is, okay, I've been in the district for two years, and so my first year in, the first time we had an expulsion, I really didn't know what the board expectations were. Many districts don't provide educational services. During that time, we had discussions, and the board at that time had made it clear, yeah, we'd like to see that. So I think it is important that we have it in writing. Now, there's no question about it. I don't have a choice, the administrators don't have a choice, there shall be, and I think that's great, and I absolutely support that. And so I think this does come a long way, but to me, there was a question. Now, maybe as board members, you know, I was privy to what happened in previous expulsions before I was here, but to me, it wasn't crystal clear what the expectations were. It certainly is now.
Susan?
My, my concern with writing anything like that into policy is there are student privacy rights that come up here. I think it's fine for you to say you're gonna show us the student's plan, but I also think but I also think you have to have the parents' permission to show us their plan because it's their personal business. And it's not, I mean, I, even though we want to be assured that it's happening, I would not go along with amending this to put that into policy language because I think that's got to be done on a case-by-case basis. And I think the next time we get an expulsion, we can try that. And if the parents are willing to say, yeah, go in and talk about what the plan is. I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I'm just thinking, I would be concerned that there might be an issue with that. And, you know, you get varying degrees of cooperation and willingness to share and I just, I.
I mean, I think curriculum instruction is our business.
More than.
Well, yeah, student privacy, the purpose based on kind of a need-to-know basis.
Right. So I mean, it might be questionable. I'm just saying, I'm.
But we set the course of instruction for all the students.
We go through the whole suspension and expulsion thing where we know everything about their life and then we can't know anything else after that. I don't agree with that.
Well, I don't know. I don't know what the law says. I mean, I don't, I don't know. And I don't see ways to put it in policy. If this board tells Dan, look, next time we have an expulsion, we want you to bring at the next available, the next possible board meeting, a description of the plan and it's okay to do that, he'll do it. I don't think that has to be written in policy.
If I may, if I may make a suggestion, which is that the next time we have an expulsion, we go through this process and we look at it. And then, and you take it from an informed position that, you know, we've updated the policy, we're going ahead. And then if the board isn't happy with what the outcome's there, then we can take this policy back up and make a changes based on what has happened with our most recent experience.
Well, I'm surprised at this discussion because, because when we had this discussion at the last meeting, I was reprimanded by two board members by saying, you had a chance to amend the order.
You do, yeah.
Okay. Now, if we amend the order, what do we amend it with? With this amendment or with an education plan? I want to see a product, someplace along the line. And I don't, and I don't think that, you know, all of these caveats and privacy and that sort of thing, we ought to know that they have an education plan because they haven't been, to my knowledge, I've been through all these and I haven't, I haven't seen any, any at all.
But we don't have it in policy to do that, that's all.
That's right.
I think this policy stands the way it is. I would like to just vote on it and be done with it and see how the next one goes. If, if you're not satisfied with how the next one goes, you can revisit it at that time. But seriously.
I want to have two next then.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendments to add those language to the, to the policy? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are we all calling?
No, we're not doing a, don't call. I just.
I thought curious.
All opposed? Not for this one. All opposed to the amendment?
No.
No. The motion fails. The amendment fails. All right, we're back to discussing the policy?
No, actually, we're back to just.
No, 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 we're done with that. We're back to the policy as, as represented. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the policy as it presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No.
Motion carries. Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Fifteen sixteen transition plan for teachers compensation.
Okay. So we've had this discussion previously. And so I think everything that's in writ, in writing, and the board docs spelled out procedurally where we're at. And others, real quick again, summary. Last May, board approved the teacher compensation plan. And that plan was, were a couple paragraphs about need to do some more work on transition, particularly for teachers who are quite experienced, that had obtained their license here prior to PI thirty-four in two thousand and four. And so what we've done since that time is we've put together a work group to put together some proposed language. And, and we've had that reviewed by the teacher compensation committee as well. And we are bringing forward the transition plan for approval tonight, recognizing there's still more work to do after this. But this formalizes the process about how we're at least going to move forward with procedurally in the review. And then in there are outlined the work that needs to be done. And so let me just address that real briefly and then I'll turn over to comment from the board members that worked on this plan. The three documents to be developed, the application form, score sheet, and feedback sheet. The application form course is the most important thing. Right now, we need to get it to the hands of the teachers. And so the way we're going to develop that, I actually had a conversation with Lisa Hype. The two of us together will start with a first draft. We want to model it after the work that teachers are already doing in educator effectiveness. So it's not a new concept for them about how they document, you know, their evidence in that piece. And so we're looking at a different format. From there, we have kind of that first draft. I'll go to our administrative team with it as well and get their feedback. And then finally, we'll go back to our teachers, who have been instrumental in putting this together and make sure we get their feedback about the usability and the ease that will be, you know, for teachers to use. So that all needs to be done within the next two weeks and then we'll easily put that together. And so the other thing we'll do then, as far as scheduling those information meetings, we'll get that scheduled within the first week of school. So when we have those in September, we'll have this documentation that we can share. And I'll certainly share it with the board as well to put this together. So those are the remaining steps. But with that, you know, maybe any of the committee members or board members that were worked on this can certainly comment or maybe have questions as well.
Dean?
If you're, it's my understanding too that, that the, the criteria that are in the rubric, which was adopted in the plan, will also be included.
Yes.
In that. And, and then you're talking about the educator effectiveness evidence that would come from the rubric, from the Danielson domains type of thing from the educational plan?
Yeah, we certainly said that some of the things would be applicable, that evidence that teachers are already providing through educator effectiveness, some of that would translate to this as well. And so that's where we want to use a similar format as well to make it easy though.
So those should, the, the new thing would be the, having to go back and regenerate the stuff that would provide evidence from the, from the rubric. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. And the, I think when we also talked about this is that we would have, that administrators would be the first review panel. And that, and that our first experience would be, I don't want to use the world trial run, but it would be our first experience with it. And it would seem to me that early on, we've also agreed that, that we would identify outstanding teachers that pass through this to serve as, to serve as review, on the review panel. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And I guess it's important to note that, that concept of having only administrators on that first round, that actually is something that was proposed and supported by our teachers who helped develop this because they felt they just weren't ready to have teachers on.
No, the only comment that I would, I would make on this proposal that we put together after thinking about it is that I think we need to be, I think we all share the idea that we need to be pretty careful on that first round because what we, the quality of what we do and the quality of those first applications that come through, we ought to try to assure that they are of high quality and not expedited because they're the first ones coming through. And I think we also hope to come out of that first group to have, to have three or four teachers that would be willing to serve on the review panels. But we, we could, we could have throughout the year, I believe, correct me if my number is wrong, but I think we're somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and fifty teachers that are pre-two thousand and four. And, and we would probably get some kind of criteria on which we might, the applications would go through. I guess, I guess in thinking this through just a little bit, and I've discussed with, this with you, that we ought to be, we ought to try to have a, the October fifth application round ought to be carefully done, I think. And hopefully to get the teachers that, out of that, that would serve on the panel. And, and I would say that we probably ought to be looking for a trial run there of fewer people going through rather than a third of them, a third of a hundred and fifty. And I would suggest the only amendment I would make to this would be to add one more round so that we don't have everybody rushing to these first one, two, or three rounds. And I would, I picked out a Monday. That was in April, two months, April eleventh to be a fourth round. And Dan, I, I shared this with you earlier and you felt comfortable with that. I hope you still do.
I do. I mean, we really don't know how many applicants we'll get in each round. I think the feeling of the work group and the teachers in particular thought, you know, that October fifth one, fifth is fairly early. And I think part of the rationale is that we really don't want to lock that first round as we work our way through. And, and so with a tight timeline, hopefully we won't. How many will come in those next two, you know, we really don't know. And so, you know, we didn't discuss this. I haven't had an opportunity necessarily to discuss with administrators, but I'm not sure that it would hurt to add another round, you know, or.
And I think if we have fewer go through and, and I would also, I would also hope that some of the ones coming out of that first round would, would not only be good exemplars, but could serve, having, would go through it and could serve as coaches in the schools. So I would hope that we would, I don't want to say, I don't want to leave it to random chance that we have all the applications coming from two schools. I'd like to try to make sure that we have some proportionate ones coming through all the schools so that the, the product of that, that they could go back to their schools. And we talked about this a bit too. And I think that would help with the coaching and for the teachers on the next round. They've been through and hopefully from that group that we also have some reviewers too.
Absolutely. And I think, again, that's another opportunity for us to kind of model the process we did with educator effectiveness, where we had a lot of support and coaching, you know, to help our teachers. And I envision us doing this exact same thing.
Susan?
Just two things. One, did I understand you to say that both the application form and the score sheet would be done within a couple of weeks or?
Yes, everything. I did, I did mention the score sheet.
They don't want to see that as well.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification.
And then my only other comment is, I like the idea of adding an April date, but what does that do to contracts if we're moving, I mean, I thought we had to have stuff done by a certain date in order for them to go into, I don't know, maybe not. I don't. If you're, if you're having an April submission date, you're not going to have them approved till May. What's that do to contracts?
Yeah, I think we did say ideally, we'd like to have everything in place at the time we issue.
So maybe it could be early April or something. I don't know. If you have a whole bunch of people waiting, it might be, I don't know.
I had a thought about that too and wondered if even adding a January date might be feasible if you had people who could work on those over break or not knowing the rhythm of that.
October.
Too many to do between December, January, and February.
Semester, I think we decide, we were trying to stick with not getting involved in reporting periods for teachers and because they get so much work at that, those times.
So I didn't know if that would influence people's decisions for their next year.
Yeah, I think, to be honest, it'd be difficult to get them to get it over break.
Yeah, yeah.
To what extent do you think the Susan's issue will, could arise?
Well, it's not, I mean, as far as the timeline of the contract, it doesn't have to be. It just needs to be neater and cleaner to have everything done by that time.
So it'll be okay if you couldn't get them?
Yeah.
You can, you can always change the contract by mutual agreement.
Yeah.
True.
Well, I'm not sure too. I mean, I don't know if we've made a, decided what actually needs to go on the individual contract.
Right, it might not, right, it might not be, so it might not be in fact. I just thought I remember talking about that.
Yeah.
Susan? Well, I just wanted to tell, tell you guys and the teachers specifically, just to thank you for the incredible work that's been done on this. I, I have some pretty significant concerns with the transition plan as written. And I know what's going on is I know you have your thoughts, it's just not here. So the first thing is, I think a very high priority should be to put together the full committee. I'm concerned about the thought process that says you have to be one of these higher level teachers to be on this committee. And I'm concerned about it not coming together because there's going to need to be some transition time for the whole committee to understand what they're doing and how they're going to work together. And we haven't piloted anything. So it would seem to me that you would take three teachers off the current committee who have been there and worked with this committee for two years, who understand this process and understand where you want to go and what you're trying to do. And then how are you going to pick the administrators? There doesn't seem to be significant thought in, at least it isn't documented here. The thought may already be there, but I can't see it in this documentation about the committee composition. I can't see if it changes. I can't see if it changes yearly. I can't see how the people are chosen other than you have to be one of these higher level teachers to be on this committee. And nothing, you got to put this, I don't see a timeframe for this committee and it has to be in place by October fifth and to be instructed on how to do this and how to do this process. And the whole thought of starting with three administrators is kind of a good way to kind of get it going, but it isn't what we intended to happen. We intended this to be a mixed group who would do the review because often teachers will understand something about what's written in the documents that an administrator may not. So to do the first process with what could be the largest numbers doesn't seem particularly mindful to me. In addition, I have a concern about, again, how you, how you determine the pool of reviewers. How's that determined? And then I, I'd like to know more about, I mean, there's a clear statement that says no teacher will be allowed to present. Well, there are significant times, and we saw that actually this evening, where it's really helpful. You have a question about the data and the material that's in front of you and you can't validate it because the teacher can't appear and you're not allowing that to happen. So I'm at least saying, think about that. Then, once again, we do listening sessions in all five schools. We have five schools and I think it's important that we do that. I don't see any language that tells me that there's any ability to appeal this. I don't see any language that says trial run. We suggested in June of last year to start a trial run just to see where we're going to have hangups so that we know how to do this, so we know how to pick the committees, so we know how to do this process. We haven't done that yet. I'd say your October fifth, you take five teachers, you do a pilot, you do a trial run. Then you know whether or not your committee's working, your forms are working before you potentially deny teachers who are going to be unhappy or upset about it because you haven't standardized the process.
Some of those questions are answered in the teacher compensation.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Susan?
You have to remember that the teachers who are getting this saw the full plan last year and came to the listening sessions and got the explanatory piece that related to their questions. They probably have a better understanding than, although you went to a lot of those, so you probably understand it as well as I do. This was just to talk about these transition pieces. The recommendation to have the administrators review the first ones instead of having any teachers came from the teachers on this committee because they don't want to do it, okay? They wanted the administrators to be first. I'm not sure the principals want to do it either, but they don't have a choice. Because we had to have somebody do it. So that came from the teachers. And there has to be, somebody has to start. And so that we, we never did agree. I don't know where you're getting that. At the board agreed there'd be a trial run. I don't have any.
I said, we talked about it.
Well, we talked about it. We, well, yeah, that was never a plan or there would be a trial run. This is going to be the real thing, but it's going to be the first application. And we're hoping people who, you know, there will be training of the administrators ahead of time. And that, the other thing is this document, the point of going out to the information sessions is people can ask all those questions. And there will be someone in each building that can help. It may fall on the principals again, that can help teachers when they say, this is what I'm submitting. And this, and this is, remember, this first round is the group of people who aren't necessarily going to have all the artifacts and things people might have later because they may have been on committees twenty years ago. And they may say back in, in this decade, I was on these committees. I was, I was very active in the expeditionary learning program when I went to middle school. I mean, they, they may have all kinds of examples, but they may not have actual artifacts to show, but they can talk about it. So it is a little bit different group and it is. So I just, I, this, and the full committee did review this the other night, right before our policy committee. And they, they felt that it was sufficient. So I, I think we've gotten the okay from the teachers who've been on the committee. They feel this document is sufficient. And I think adding that fourth date is a good idea. That doesn't mess things up. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and to pile on on that just a little bit, the, Susan, I, I think your point was well taken. Your, your point of having a trial run, well, I didn't call it a trial run, by adding that extra date. I think we can reduce the numbers that go through on that first round. And it'll be a real round, but we will have experience. If we make mistakes, we will make them with, with fewer people that first time. And I hope that out of that, we will, we will have the cadre for the second, third, and fourth round.
And the appeal process is, I mean, the appeal ability is in the plan itself. So it's not here within the plan itself.
Okay. You might just add appeal, see plan?
I don't agree with that. This is an addendum to the plan. They have the plan and it's in the plan.
And in fact, it does at points say teacher compensation plan, page five, for example, one talks about the committee. All right, any further discussion? Okay. Did we move it? I don't think we made a motion for it. Somebody make a motion for the presentation, for approval of the trans. Thank you, as presented. A second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's the way to go.
Motion carries. Next item, discussion of possible approval of a new charge for ad hoc long-range facilities planning committee. Dan?
Okay, we had discussion, our last board meeting. And since that time, we did have another follow-up discussion with folks from CG Schmidt and Epstein-Ullin Architects. And by we, meaning Jared Rosine was present along with myself, I think we were the school personnel people. And we did talk about some of the things that were discussed at the last board meeting, a few meetings, and about the process. So the one thing you have in this time that you didn't two weeks ago is a draft planning charter. And again, this is still a draft, not asking for approval tonight, but this is to give you an idea to facilitate the discussion about what we recommend, again, a little more detail about the process. And so, again, the five key areas and the recommendations from the original committee that came to the board, we have a lot of work to do in those specific areas. And so I'd like to just maybe start by just talk about the grade level configuration, and then others kind of follows suit in the same way. I want to make it clear that we talk about in that document, you know, internal, external, you know, experts to put together this information. It's not to come to the board, do the board's work, and say, here's our recommendation, you know, thumbs up and thumbs down. It is to do a lot of work and gather information that we can bring to the board, so that you can have informed discussion. And so it's not going to be, the intention is not to come and say, here it is, vote on it tonight. It's to gather some information, and then there'll probably be quite extensive discussion with the board. But that's, that right, is, I don't want to say most important, they're all important items, but that, in order of occurrence, has to really come first. That's going to drive a lot of the other discussions. So I want to make it clear when we talk about the administration's role in this, it's not to put together necessarily a recommendation. It's to gather information and give options and considerations. And so when the board has those discussions, you know, everyone's on the same page. Some of the board members had an opportunity to serve on the committee and know, and already had some of those discussions, more so than others. But we need to make sure all seven board members have that same information, because those are really, really important decisions that the board's going to make moving forward. So that's the intent when we talk about what the administrative role is going to be and the staff role in this. But that's where, and it does talk about the decision-making in this draft charter. When it touched on the decisions of this planning team, meaning decisions about what we're going to bring to the board, not decisions about, you know, final results. And so this is a draft. We can amend this planning charter. If we have, you know, things that you'd like to include, we'll take it back and do that.
Talking about this page?
Uh, no, there is a.
It's attached to the board.
Yeah, there's another one. That's just a one-page document.
There you go. That's the one.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. I'm glad you made those comments about the grade level configuration, because to be clear what the job is, I mean, that's, that to me is a decision for professional educators to make. And I was not clear on whether it belonged with the long-range facilities planning committee.
I would agree that, my opinion, the committee had done some initial work on that and kind of set, you know, identified what the real issues are that we need to address. But I think from this point, it goes from, you know, our administrative group to this board. I don't know, you know, we talked about the role of the, the full committee being more as an advisory. And we actually talked about the terms that, you know, kind of an opportunity to vet some things. Now, and that's something the board's going to decide. Is it something that, the board's discussion, hey, do we want to go back and get some input there? And as we talk about using them as needed. And then certainly we talk about the communication piece is real important, too, so that as the board's making decisions or considering decisions, we keep that committee well-informed as well along the way, so that, you know, they are part of that community engagement piece. But I think the decision-making is clearly going to be between, you know, from our administrative staff and that school staff to the board. The advisory committee is there to get kind of as vetting and bounce ideas off of as needed, but the board will make those decisions.
Jeff?
I think grade level configuration is education, but I think it's everybody. Because I think, I think it's probably the most important decision we're going to make coming up. I think it's like this little logjam of grade level configuration. Once that's decided, then it opens the floodgates for everything else. But until that's decided, everything is kind of on hold.
Where is that decision? How do we get to make that decision?
That's a good question. I don't know. I think everybody has to be involved, board, community, teachers, administration. Because really, it's going to affect not just like this year, it's going to affect 25 years from now.
Susan?
I'd like to make a motion that the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee be reestablished with a new charge to serve in an advisory capacity to provide additional feedback to administrative and board recommendations as needed and that the new committee's name be changed to the Long Range Facilities Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Susan, you had your hand up.
I, yeah, I was going to count on the grade configuration, that I think a lot of the information has to come from staff first. And then I'd like the idea that we're all going to really hash through it, but I'm perfectly willing to vote on this motion instead.
So the motion that's on the table is to reestablish the committee. The charter is not part of that motion. Or do we want to conclude the charter in the motion that this is the charter for the committee?
I was not recommending action of the charter tonight.
Hang on a second.
I wasn't.
I thought we would have discussion on it, and if you, if something that you want to approve.
I think we should charge the committee, specifically tell the committee what they're doing, and whether or not we do it tonight. I just think that some, we would do. My question would be, are we ready to approve this charter as drafted?
I'm not. I, I'm not, because I think the whole committee, I, I like the committee being brought in to here. I, you know, I think we can even talk further about when it's an appropriate time to bring them in, whether it's after we have, I mean, if we're still having a board workshop, or we're going to hash through all these things and then run it past them. That's kind of what I was envisioning. This, to me, is a driver for the whole process and not just for that committee, so I would not be comfortable adopting this document as the charge for the committee. I think the charge to the committee is simply to serve in an advisory capacity, as Susan just read, from the administrative recommendation. I thought this was perfect.
The charge is in the motion.
The charge is in the motion.
The charge is clearly in the motion, and the charge is, with a new charge, to serve in an advisory capacity. And here's their, here's their directive, to provide additional, not original, additional feedback to administrative and board recommendations as needed. And that will be board-based.
Right, I think that's perfect.
All right. Any further discussion? Carrie?
When I see the planning charter for the Long Range Facilities Core Planning Team, is that really just referencing Dan, Jared, CG Schmidt, and Epstein-Ullin?
Thanks for the clarification, yes.
That's how I read this.
Yes, that's what the core planning team is.
Is there a possibility of including a board member on that core planning team? How do you see that?
I mean, we meet during work hours, and they're not evening meetings, so.
They're twice a month.
Can board members attend and listen?
That's for you to decide. I mean, they're just part of our normal meeting schedule, I mean, what we do.
I think that's where the action is, personally. I agree with Jeff. I think this is where, what's really going to be interesting, is thinking about the, as this evolves. I think this is fascinating stuff and cool.
We do want to, you know, I think, I think sitting, attending these meetings and listening, I think is, is fine, is appropriate. I don't think we want to involve board members in the work of the administrative work, the administrative level.
Yeah, I think a lot of this is administrative work and to get rolling on a lot of this stuff. And I don't want to impede the process by doing that, and I think they are going to be bringing it back to us. And I, I just, having been in those meetings, I think they're appropriately staffed. I mean, not these meetings, but I mean, back in the meeting day I went to after Dean left, and I, I don't know. I, I probably wouldn't choose to attend these.
Dean?
I think they, I think you're better off going with them.
Dean?
Well, there's, it seems to me there's, there's four moving parts here. There's the staff administration, there's the board, there's that committee, and then there's the consultants. And it, and it seems to me that if any one of those gets too far behind or too far out in front of some of the others. And I think that will vary by these issues as well. I think particularly if you have the professional consultants, with architects leading the horses and charges, they may get us out on, on modern educational designs before we're ready to move. On the other hand, nobody can do much about some of this stuff until we deal with the grade configuration. This has been outlined, and I, I think we need to have a, a, I think we need to have a board workshop. And I think the board workshop can deal with the goals issues, and I think this needs to be on the agenda. And I think that as we proceed, we may want to mix the advisory committee, the consultants, and the board, and the staff in different mixes on each one of these things at different times and not try to get a, a single template tonight or even at a conference.
Do you have a specific proposal relative to the motion?
What?
I'm trying to understand where you're going with this.
I'm just, I'm just saying, let's be cautious of what we put into a motion.
Well, I.
Susan?
I kind of liked your comment from the last meeting, which was, I do think we should, you know, it's interesting because the consultants thought we should have a full board workshop, and we were kind of like, well, when, when the report came, there weren't many questions. There wasn't a lot of feedback. We had two board meetings to talk about it, and really people didn't have much to say. So we said, it doesn't look like the board wants to have a workshop. So anyway, so, and that came from the consultants. And by the way, the architect members, when it told us we didn't need to build, and we're all like, what? What do you mean we don't need to build? So that's, it was interesting.
Did they say that?
Yes, they did.
Oh, my gosh. We won before we thought.
Well, right, and so, anyway, I liked your comment at the last meeting, which was that we can approve this motion to reinstate this Long Range Facilities Advisory Committee. They might not meet for a while, not a year. I agree with that. But, and then also, we should schedule a board workshop to talk more about all these other issues. But I think none of that should stop us from approving this committee tonight and just being moving with that and checking in with them and seeing if they're ready to go again. That's, that's kind of the order I would see doing.
Any further discussion? Jeff?
I think grade configuration has to be decided sooner rather than later. I mean, if we wait for the administrators to look at them, the board looks at them, and they look at them, next thing you know, we're in May. And I don't know that, I mean, I think it needs to be, we need to just pick something and live with it. And then start arranging up. Then other things can wait, but I don't think that can wait.
You're absolutely right. I apologize. I didn't attach that document again this week that we had from two weeks ago. Yeah, but on there, I think it has, it shows the deadline, October 1st.
Yeah, it does.
So that means administratively, this next month, we're going to be doing all this gathering information and talking about some possible options. And by October 1st, have it to the board, because you're absolutely right. We got to get that done this fall.
And I think, I think we got to find a way to add community, because it's going to be a major decision. And community's got to be on board with us. We can't tell them what to do. We need a little bit of push from them on what we should.
I agree. Actually, I think, to me, that's the first workshop, is, you know, to me, talk about the whole thing, but specifically that, start that discussion on the grade configuration, and then you, from there, you can figure out the process, how much you're going to do before you make a decision, how you're going to engage the community and all that, because no doubt, that's, you, I agree.
I think a lot of this stuff can wait, or we can make some decisions, but that is the one that I would think will.
Yeah.
But it needs to be an informed discussion, which it would be if you guys have done your work first.
Okay. Anyone else? It's been moved and seconded to approve the reestablishment of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Who are the current members of that committee, or who were members of the old committee?
Of the board, on the board?
Board members.
Dean was the chair, it was Jeff, Molly, and Brandon Buehl, Dave.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the board, just the board members.
Oh, board members. Jeff, Carrie.
I, when I was appointed to that committee, I wasn't elected yet.
That's correct.
So I was a citizen member.
What board members, what members as board members were appointed to that committee?
Dean, Jeff, and then me, who replaced Lionel, who eventually appointed me. I was originally executive chair on that side.
So right now, Dean, Susan, Pasha. Who would like to serve on this committee? Carrie, Susan, everybody is, okay. Everybody who wants to serve on the committee, please send me your, just send, send an email with that interest.
What's the work of the committee?
What's the work of the committee is as. That's right. I was going to put a charge in there, but we decided not to, so.
We did put a charge in. The charge says it's advisory.
To be announced, is what you're saying.
Well, we, hang on a second, if I may, we have these lists of things that, that we're going to talk about, recommendation from the first plan. And I think the, the goal of this committee, or the charge of this committee, is for the board to take up those things and say, oh, we need advice on this, on this, on this, as they relate to those, those specific charges. All right, if we can move on to item four, sorry. Discussion of possible approval of advisor enrollment recommendations for 2015-16.
I'll start, and I'll turn it over to Jared, and Connie's here as well. We're looking at just a small revision, 4K only. If you recall, we came back, you know, last month and looked at all of our grade levels and looked at the grade levels where our projected enrollment was still going to be below our class-sized goals and asked for additional seats in those areas. 4K is one that daily has been monitored as we have, you know, new parents register. Likewise, we opened those additional open enrollment seats. Of course, at this late stage, a number of parents have already made plans, and many have declined. So as of today, we believe we still have eight openings that would be, you know, below our, to get it to the class line goal, class size goal. And so we are asking for additional seats, but it's, the other thing is, is very possible we won't fill those. We've pretty much gone through the list, but I'll let Jared speak to the decisions of that, and Connie can type in.
Yep, and so it's always challenging when we have to put together a spreadsheet that really explains the picture when we look at a placement, especially when we're talking about these eight seats. So previously, this is the spreadsheet that I have, an update for tonight's board meeting. We're looking at additional eight seats at 4K. And currently, we have the possibility of placing those kids at either an off-site location or Winnequa. Taylor Curry, right now, is completely full based on our guidelines. We had originally 43 individuals that had applied for 4K. At the last two board meetings that we had approved, we had approved up to 26. And so we're down to the last number to get to where we're at. And like Dan had stated, that it's, we're a number of days from school starting to tomorrow, and we send these letters out. They're going to pretty much, you know, have to have a pretty quick turnaround, and most likely, those kids are probably not going to come. But we do have the ability, when we're working with Connie and Gina, and getting those kids placed and maintaining that class size goal to place up to eight additional kids, which would exhaust our waiting list. And we wish everybody that hadn't applied for 4K. So on the spreadsheet, where it does get a little confusing, is where I say T4K offsite proposal is eight. But then also under Winnequa, I have eight. It's a total of eight, and they can be placed between those two locations. Connie works very closely with the applications that are coming in, because we do try to preference up the parents. And so that's why, you know, we might have a number of parents that are requesting Winnequa. But the next time, we might have a Polish appearance requesting the learning ladder. And then the other part is, as school gets closer, you might have some people that have declined. And so there's another spot that opens up at a different location. So like Dan also said, we have been monitoring 4K on a daily basis. I think Connie gets updates, oh, here's four new students. Oh, no, we have three that are not coming, or something like that. So she, we're talking daily to send out those letters and stuff. So tonight's approval is only asking for eight additional at the 4K level, and they would be placed at either Winnequa or 4K offsites.
Can I clarify though? It's not an eight additional, because we had 16. Of that 16, eight have denied. So it's really just filling that 16. We only have eight kids left.
So that was a new development.
That was as a three o'clock or two o'clock.
So it's not really increasing our numbers?
It's not.
So people actually tell us they're not coming, or they just don't show up?
We had six that said no.
Okay. Which is good, right? I mean, instead of just not showing up, right?
So explain that again. Do that again, Connie.
Okay, so you approved 16 spots a while ago. Of course, it was 10. We filled those 10. Then you approved 16 more spots.
So a total of 26?
Correct.
Yeah.
So we sent out 16 letters.
Okay.
We had some that said no, and then we kind of bumped up, and, you know, if two said no, we sent more. We are now down to, we're waiting to hear back from, I think it was eight people, and they said no. So we only had eight kids left in that list. So we, tomorrow, are sending the last eight across.
And that's still within the original 26?
Yes, and there aren't zero more kids, but there is one alternative. Yes. And there aren't zero more kids, but there is one alternative.
What?
So there aren't any additional, even though, even if we approve eight additional spots.
Does everybody else have said no?
You don't have anybody on the list to call?
We have contacted, everyone has been contacted.
Can I, can I ask why we need to approve this, if it's not any more seats?
Absolutely. That's a great question. We talked about this, because we also have something now in Wisconsin called alternative open enrollment. And so throughout the year, we get a number, they can basically apply year-round. So we still have eight seats open, you know, below our class line goals. And so we're still recommending we approve those. That way, if we do get any additional applications, we do have a seat available.
Right.
That helps with my question, because I wanted to know whether the deadline had passed whenever it was months ago, and so we were fixed to that list versus a rolling application process, where we could continue to take interest.
Susan?
I just wanted to ask, Connie, where Jared has given us, like, 11.5, half a kid. Thank you, in the TK offsite, and the 14, are all those sections, like, at Winnequa, there are three sections?
Yep.
Are all those sections at 14, so what sometimes happens is, we get an average on that list. So there's a class of 17, and a class of 12, and a class of-
Yeah, I think as of today, when I was going through that list, for Winnequa, we had, like, the one class, 16, and there were three open enrollment. All three of those denied, declined. And we kind of slotted them into that spot. They declined. So, and then another one was gone one. We ended up today looking at three who would be going to Winnequa, and kind of put two in the morning and one in the afternoon. So it all will be around 15 to 16 kids at Winnequa.
Okay, so there isn't one class that, again, because it's 4K, and it's morning and afternoon, it's easy to do. I know it's the high school where you get messed up usually, but-
Carrie?
And then the offsite, I'm just validating.
The offsite-
Is okay too? Because your numbers are really low.
Not so much anymore.
Oh, okay.
No, we've also had a number of district kids all of a sudden show up at our door. So I'm not feeling, oh, my goodness.
But we don't have a section of 18?
Yes, you do. Learning ladder has 18. Kid Safari in the morning, I think will have 18. The afternoon, one of their sections maybe has 16, and the other would be one that we just had to open, because we were full. So they would have anywhere from five to eight, depending on how many open enrollment, or maybe more district kids we will add to this.
Okay, so I just, I just want to feel comfortable that, understanding, even if we approve these eight, they may not even be there. They probably won't be there. But we may get additional district kids in the next five days. I understand that. That we still will be able to, we won't have any sections greater than 18.
No.
Okay.
Unless all of a sudden-
I know, I know, I know.
These eight are considered part of the alternative open enrollment?
No.
No. So how do we approve seats for that?
So the alternative approval, it just goes back to our original approval. So we say we approve in January, say 20 seats, but we might only get 15 applications, because the application closes at the end of April. That leaves five additional seats for the alternative applications to fill in. Boards can also go back and open up additional spots as applications come in. Some smaller school districts, what they have done is they have also, every time there's an alternative application, they come to the board, and they have a conversation. So the board can set, so like, if we approve eight seats tonight, those eight seats are available for either regular open enrollment kids, if we still have them on the waiting list, and then alternative application kids.
Thank you.
But we always have to exhaust our regular open enrollment list first, before we proceed to the alternative. And alternative applications are not allowed to be processed until July 1st. So that's when we first start seeing them. What sort of has changed the way it's been done is that open enrollment ends in April. We let family, either boards make decisions, and we send out letters in May. Families are letting us back in June. But then this year for us, it was sort of unique, because then we came back in July and opened up some additional spots. But we still had a number of applications that were still sitting on our waiting list. So all the alternative applications that have came in have been put on hold. But we, right now, like, possibly 4K will have one, two, if some come in. And there's been, like, maybe four or five other ones that have came in that, who'd exhausted the waiting list, and there's no more kids. But based on what the board has approved on this last column, we had some spaces available still.
That's what I was sort of trying to figure out, like, if word got out that you could still get in if you were patient enough or waited long enough. That is just helpful to me, to understand how late you could actually apply. You could apply the first week of September, potentially. Okay, that was, thank you. That's helpful. I had another question too, Peter. Is it okay if I go ahead? So the other question that I had was about, I completely appreciate that many families have different preferences for where they want to be placed. And I know how hard you worked to get people what their stated preferences are. Are you anticipating, as it gets to the final leg of the race here, pretty more tight balance between the different sites? Because when I just looked at this, and I told her what you just said, that it's actually tightening up now. But the projected class size averages, there's such a disparity between the different types of sites. And so looking at these, it looked like, you know, the average was going to be 11 and a half for the class size offsite, 17.5 at Taylor Prairie, and at Winnequa, 14. I mean, just looking at those as being-
They're all leveling out more toward 16, 17.
Because the other, because I was thinking, if they were going to be really different like that, how much more work can I create for you, ha, ha, by saying to a parent, gosh, you could stay at Kid Safari with this 18-person class size, or you could move over here with the 11- or eight-person class size. What's better for your kid? And you might have some families who would want to move to a smaller class size?
For right now, though, we kind of look at, do they really want a Manona? Do they want Caddisdro? Where do I have the space at Caddisdro? It's an offsite right now.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Right. And I was wondering about that, Connie, because I could imagine some people got their first choice and then realized it wasn't their first choice, and they had 18 kids in it compared to their second choice that had 10 kids.
It's probably not.
Mood? Okay. And so-
So either you'd like to be in the 4K program, in Manona, or Caddisdro, and what kind of get?
Which is the highest or most popular first choice? Is it Taylor Prairie?
Unless it's relevant to the immediate discussion before, it's getting kind of late. Can we move on?
Yeah.
We've discussed-
That's fine. No, I thought that was helpful, and us determining whether the average is in approving additional seats.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? It's been moved, has it been moved?
Nope.
Nope, discussion, I'd like a motion for discussion, and I'm sorry, for approval of revised open enrollment recommendations for 2015-16. As presented, Dean, second. Susan? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under new business, discussion and possible approval of waiver of liquidated damages for breach of individual teacher contract. Susan?
I approve approval of liquidated damage for breach of contract of individual teacher contract. That's just a second.
It's moved in second. All, any discussion?
The motion is to waive.
Yes, right. The motion is to waive. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item L, future agenda items. In this, I want to discuss, and under future meetings, we want to discuss proposed workshop. And items that we want to discuss at said workshop. First of all, why don't we, well, it's been proposed to me, there's a number of things that we talk about at workshop. And among those things are board goals, superintendent goals, having perhaps, combining it with our first check-in with the superintendent, because I think that works together with board superintendent goals at the same time. Talking about planning for a strategic plan, discussion of climate survey, planning and discussion, initial planning, discussion for some referendum, that we've discussed. Any other items that we want to talk about?
General board conduct and meetings and board behavior, that kind of thing. It kind of goes along with setting board goals. Middleton, for example, is actually reading keynotes to school boards and using that to help set their goals. I think focusing on appropriate protocol and appropriate behavior is a good thing they did once in a while. So I like to do that. And I'm not sure I do agree with doing the check-in on Dan's specific goals at that workshop, because I think there's going to be plenty for us to discuss as a board with all of this. And that, we could get to some of that, but I think we might have to, and then, I think we do need to, I assume you're thinking of a separate board workshop for the long-range planning piece.
Well, I'm, I'm, that's what I've got, I mean, we can discuss that.
Okay. I think that's a whole separate one personally, and then for a special group.
I agree.
Unfortunately.
Bye.
Any further discussion? Any comments, Dean?
I would agree that we do, you're talking about not doing the check-in.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we can do that at another time, but we can begin to set goals.
We have to set our own goals and do our own self-aware where we are in that whole piece. I think that has to be part of this general board workshop.
Yeah, organizational goals, that affects, that would affect Dan, though, right?
Our behavior as well, and our, what we do as a board.
But what goals would you not discuss at that meeting?
Well, well, we, I, we, you know, we used to use those Shifley forms to go through and do a checklist of how we were doing on certain things, and then we would formulate our own board goals every year, and we haven't done that for a while. We did the PDSA format, because people wanted to still do that. I think we discussed whether we still want to do that, or if we want to do something simpler, or if we do. That's all a piece of what I see as this workshop. And it would include strategic planning, and that kind, we could talk about some of the goals that we might. I just think that the initial check-in for Dan should be a separate, that's a separate personnel thing. That should be held at a separate meeting. And I also think there may be enough conversation around the long-range planning if we really wanted to get into talking about vision, and what we hope to come out of this, or whatever, to have a separate, as a separate workshop. I'm not sure unless-
So maybe at the workshop, we will discuss proceeding with future workshops.
Well, it could be one.
You know, sort of, I think we need to talk about-
We had talked about, I, I wanted, our consultant that we brought in to help us with that workshop, recommended quarterly workshops to do check-ins of how we're doing on things. And I, and I don't know if we want to do that, or even twice a year. Last year, the board didn't want to do that, so I think we should talk about-
Well, that would be, that would be sort of conduct of the board business, and board goals.
I mean, we should talk about all that this first workshop, I think.
Any other discussion of content, Dan?
Yeah, I've got one item, and I believe I sent an email out, you know, this week, regarding the strategic planning process. And I've referred in the past to people that, you know, like us to use to facilitate that. And they would not be available on Saturdays in September, but there is one date that I tentatively would want to check with you on, Wednesday, September 30th. Now, we already have a policy committee meeting scheduled for 5:30, but perhaps we could cut that short, because this should only be an hour, hour and a half tops, just to talk about process of strategic planning. You know, nothing actually start to work, but to just go through that, so we can decide how we're going to do it and when. And so that would be something, I guess, tonight, to find out if that's something we're willing to do on that date.
I think we can, that's the 30th?
The 30th, this is a Wednesday.
Okay. We have time to decide that, but I think that's, that's a reasonable request.
People are available at our work meetings, since it's, we knew we were going to meet anyways. And we have a policy meeting prior to that. We can talk about what type, both.
Wednesday, the 30th?
Policy that would have to be no more than an hour and a half, and this would be, I think we could do it.
Totally trust you to end that policy committee, at whatever time.
And we moved that from 4:30 to 5:30, didn't we?
We made it all 5:30. We just decided to be consistent.
In terms of scheduling a board workshop, my preference is strongly for a Saturday morning event. I think that we get more done, because we don't get tired after we've been meeting for three hours. And we can get, I just, is my observation to pass, that those, I think, are more productive for a period of time.
And again, I'm not going to support that, because I think Saturday is sometimes the only time you have family time. And I think it's, I mean, this is a job. This is something we do, so we can schedule during the workday. The other thing is, it makes administration give up their Saturday, and I think that's inconsiderate. So I wouldn't support that as a first choice. I would look at other dates first.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
I support Saturday morning as a first choice, because I feel what you said was about productivity and the purpose of the meeting, and I think that can be accomplished in that timeframe.
I mean, personally, when it comes to my family, the kids don't get out of bed on, they're teenagers, you know. I don't see them before 11 on Saturday morning, so I don't, not basically-
So you have a totally different family than the one I'm with, gets up at 5:45.
It's not the same for all of us. Let's be, okay, Saturday morning, thumbs up, thumbs down? Two thumbs down, rest of the thumbs up? What am I going to do with that? I'm trying to accommodate everybody.
So that may eliminate me depending upon the date.
Okay, I have the 30th, or the 12th, the 30th, which would be this coming Saturday, but might not be sufficient time to prepare. The following Saturday is Labor Day weekend, and then the 12th is-
The 30th is Sunday?
It's 29th.
29th.
I'm sorry, the 29th, yes, I'm sorry, the 29th, which is the 12th.
And what's your other date?
The 12th. Any overwhelming, any objections? Anybody can't make the 12th?
The 12th is better for Paul. I can sell my tickets.
I don't know.
You have tickets?
I've had them since 1995, same section.
What time is the game?
It's at 11:00.
The game starts at 11:00?
It's a patsy game. It's meeting at 6:00.
But if that's the only date that everyone can make, then I'll do that.
All right, anybody have any further suggestions? Any dates, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Saturday.
Was the 30th, or was the 29th rejected?
What about using a Wednesday night when we don't have a board meeting? Starting at 6:00 and going until 9:00?
Was the 29th rejected, Peter?
Because we've got, hang on a second, we've got a policy committee on Wednesday the 2nd. We've got a board meeting on the 7th. The 16th is open. We've got a board meeting on the 23rd, and we've got a-
The board meeting on the 9th.
And we just scheduled a meeting on the 30th.
What about the 16th?
And?
I've been out of town all day that day, and I'm not sure what time I get back, I make it back growing up.
Yeah, 16th is fine.
16th will work for me.
But again, it's, it's, it's an evening.
Our Sunday is off.
Yeah, but if it's a time you could get everybody.
Well, I, I have a plan to be, I have a plan to be in Oshkosh.
Did you ask about Sundays? Every single Sunday is open for me.
What about, how do you feel about Sundays?
Every single Sunday is open for me.
I could do something tonight, probably.
Sundays are okay with me.
This is why, yes. All right, somebody make a suggestion, or?
What happened, okay, Susan's checking on the 16th right now.
Well, it's hard.
No, I know, it's difficult.
Because we've got two meetings, and we've got another meeting, and then we've got another meeting. So there's four meetings. Now you've got to go to a fifth meeting.
What is the, what are the four meetings? What do you mean?
Well, we've got a meeting on the 30th, our two board meetings, and we've got a committee meeting, because everybody has a committee meeting.
Right.
So it's hard for me to do a fifth night.
It's hard to do a fifth night, so you would prefer a Saturday morning?
No, Saturday morning is working. It's hard to get away a fifth.
Well, if we can't go during the day, and we can't go at night, what's your?
I don't know. October, I mean, if we're going to do the 30th.
Oh, I see, September is, I want to get this done sooner than-
I agree with you.
I think that there's a, people want to get this done sooner rather than later. I'm going to revisit the 29th this coming Saturday.
You know, here's the other thing, we, there are only three of us on policy. It's possible that we could find another date in September, and we could try the 2nd of September.
Who is?
I'd be back by like 6:00, so, on the 16th.
Otherwise, an option, if I mind, on the 30th, maybe we keep the second policy, and on the 30th, cancel that, but make that a whole workshop. We're only an hour of this designated to the strategic planning, but then we could continue on as other things.
30th of what?
September.
Why would you, why would you charge a strategic planning?
No, we would keep that. That would be part of the workshop, and then we could do additional items.
Like 7 to 8, and then do the rest, 8 to 9, or something.
Boy, you're optimistic.
They think it's only going to take an hour.
Strategic planning process?
Well-
I, I think that's, listen, I walked in the other night when you guys were having a meeting, and we were supposed to start, and Carrie and I were both trying to be on time for the meeting, and there's another meeting in front of us.
It was 6:28, and we finished on time.
I'm just saying, it's difficult when people sit through the whole meetings.
I am going to send out an email with a list of times and suggestions, and you will send me any times that you cannot make them, and your preference for times, and I will pick from the available timing. Oh, sorry, Jennifer, have I been ignoring you for about twenty minutes?
No, not that long. I haven't thrown anything, so. Okay, so I need a little culture here. When you say workshop, in my mind, that's two to three hours. It's structured, it has priorities, there's processing, there's bathroom breaks, adults get to have food, and where your comfy clothes. Is this what we're, is this what I'm talking, is, am I on the right path?
However, two to three hours is optimistic. I mean, in the past, we've done them typically like eight to noon on Saturday mornings.
No, we've never done one.
We have not done them on Saturdays.
We did them down at American Inn, remember?
One time.
Several, several times.
No, that was one.
I remember how that went. Two people were crying when they left.
We had, we had, we had, we've done several, we've done repeatedly, we've done them repeatedly at, we've done them in the morning.
We've usually done them in the evening, and we've had, because we have Matthew fail here, and he consulted one, and.
It's a Wednesday night, it's work for you.
Andrew consulted another one, it was in the evening, we've never done them on Saturday. Even that one was, it was at night, because we always wanted to work with them.
He wasn't. All those were.
All right, I will send out an email, resist, listening input.
Peter, were some of the options that you were including, were you including the second?
Yes.
Wednesday, September second, and Wednesday, September sixteenth?
Yes.
Because those are good options.
The second is a policy meeting.
That's what, I mean.
I'll, I'll await your email, Peter.
Good question.
Okay, thank you.
On contact?
Yeah.
I don't think climate reports should be in there. I think we should cut, we should have a climate report at a board meeting with administrators here to answer questions.
Anyone else have thoughts on that? I thought it was, I thought a workshop was.
I don't agree with that, no.
No, we discussed that in a workshop.
We did not, I think we should.
So if we have questions about a school, then the administrators won't be there again.
Dan represents.
I need to have a discussion with the board about the whole climate survey in general, about the purpose.
And we can't do that at a board meeting?
We can.
We can, sure.
That's what I mean, I think it should be at a board meeting.
Okay.
I think we're doing a board workshop, let's just do it.
I think having a workshop, I think is, let's, let's do it, just see how it goes.
We've got a lot to do at all these workshops.
We'll see how we can. I'll send out an email, future meetings, I'd make future meetings September.
I don't have mine on there yet, we've got to figure it out.
Currently scheduled, the September second policy, at five thirty, September ninth, the school board meeting at seven P.M. September twenty-third, school board meeting at seven P.M., and the thirtieth, policy, policy committee at five thirty. Any other, anything else? I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved, ten twenty.
Is it seconded, or do we have to?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.